Okay.
Good morning, everyone. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for January 25th, 2022. No public testimony is permitted during the review session. SOC cases, new cases, item number 25, 171-97-BZ, 65-01, Cassina Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, thank you. Morning, everyone. We have proof of service of initial application and a notice of hearing to officials. Community Board recommends approval. The applicant provided a really clear breakdown of conditions to the grant and compliance with them. I appreciate that. Assembly and actually, we could use that as a model for somebody who doesn't know how to do that properly. Oddly, though, this shows the front yard sort of sidewalk parking as a parking area with a long, long curb cut along Cassina. It means in practice, a car driving along the sidewalk to get to the parking space. I kind of was confused by that. There's only one curb cut. And so one curb cut is more or less in front of the parking space. The other one's nowhere near it. So I don't actually understand what that's about. The originally approved plans, actually, the originally approved plans don't show that the front area was parking, although there is a curb cut in those plans. However, the 2004 letter of substantial compliance shows parking in front. There's two cars parked in front. There were also previously three parking spaces in the loading area, in the interior loading area, that was reduced in size in the 2004 LSC. So it doesn't look like there's any more parking spaces there. I'd like to know whether that was required parking. I don't, you know, with these LSCs, it's not clear how the changes were permitted or what the criteria were. So I'd also like to know what happened to the street trees along 65th Avenue? They need to be replaced. So they need to submit us applications to Department of Parks for their replacement. The photos show metal doors and rolling gates facing 65th Avenue in need of painting. So those should be scraped and painted. They need to remove the miscellaneous wires that are hanging from the roof. The building looks a little bit unkempt because there's just these wires hanging around. Also, there are dumpsters that are being stored on the side of the building. The dumpsters are mostly, it seems, being used by the pizza restaurant. So, so we're talking about food debris and the rats that go with that. You can see actually how the kitchen operation leads directly outside to the dumpsters in the terms of the layout. So, and the trash enclosure, as depicted on most of the plans, is not what in fact exists. It protrudes onto the sidewalk, past the building setback line, and is not enclosed on three sides, and it's very unsightly. Yes, thank you, Nazar. That's what I'm talking about. It's terrible looking. And if it's filled with pizza boxes or uneaten pizza and dough and so on, that is a rat, you know, paradise. So I'm like looking at that loading dock that's no longer large enough for a car. It looks like the loading dock on the left. You see, yeah, there you go, that, the, the rolling, pull to the left, the rolling gate all the way to the left, past the, past the green, oops. Anyway, there, there we are. So that's the entrance to a loading dock that used to be room for three cars to park. And now it doesn't look like it's even enough for one car to park. And I'm wondering why that can't be where the trash is stored during everything but pickup times. Then there's a door at the loading dock that swings into the fire egress passage that I see in plan from the daycare center. It's egress from the daycare. That, that kind of outswing is not permitted unless it doesn't impede with the, the width of the corridor, of the fire corridor. There's a rule about how much room on the fire corridor there has to be. And it doesn't look in the plan like it's allowing for that, but they need to verify and check the code on that. The first floor is labeled as an existing trade school. I, I, I'm not clear on this. It seems like it's supposed to be a daycare, but there's still a label that says trade school. I think that's just a remnant, but they need to correct the drawings. And the second, the statement of fact says that the second floor is a trade school, not the first. So I think that's just a mistake on the drawings. And those are my comments. Vice Chair Shonda?
Okay, thank you. So when I went to the site, it was very odd to see that parking for two vehicles, as per the previously approved plan, to be permitted along the frontage and the access would be from Cassina. And I don't know how they would exit because there's only one curb cut. So you would have to use that to access and then you're backing into traffic, which kind of is extremely not safe. And there is a park right next to this site. And, and on top of it, this, if you look at the leases, the various lease terms that's been submitted, these two parking spaces are, I, I think, are for the daycare facility. That's the agreement. So I am a little bit concerned in terms of how this parking space operates and, and how it's, I would like the applicant to clarify that. And how do they ensure that it does not affect any of the pedestrian flow along that sidewalk and those who are entering the building, especially children? You're right about the trash location. It does extend into the sidewalk. And it is not looking very good. When I was there, I saw actually two dumpsters, one on the curb and one on the sidewalk. So those need to be all put away in a safe place so that they're not an impediment to traffic or pedestrian. I, I had another comment, and if you look at the plan, this is, if you compare it to the previously approved plan and the seller level and the proposed plan, there are two retail spaces as per the previously approved plan. One at the corner and one on what I would say on the south side. And then there is the lobby staircase and elevator that goes into the cellar that provides access to both the retail spaces. But now, as the plan drawn, I don't know if that's the reality or not. It shows that staircase is now part of the retail store. And the elevator also enters, accesses the retail store. So if, if a child has to go to the daycare facility that needs elevator access, one has to go to the retail store and then into the classroom. Similarly, I think this staircase is one of the two fire exits for the, from the daycare, from the cellar, for both the retail operator and the daycare. So I'm not sure if the way it's presented and the plan also is code compliant in terms of fire exit. So that is a question I have. If Chief Daley can look into it and the applicant can look into it and verify, that would be helpful. So those two were really my comments on this.
Sorry, I just had a chance to open the drawing to find the staircase that you're talking about. Which staircase are you talking about?
This, if you look at the frontage of Cassina, there are two retail stores.
Yes.
So there's one on the north side and there's another one on the south side. The south side, which says 421, which by the way, the square footage is wrong. This is the old square footage of the old retail footprint. Now seems to the staircase and the elevator is leading right into the retail store.
The staircase from where?
From the lobby, from the main lobby.
The main lobby, you come, you go up the little stairs from the sidewalk into an existing lobby where there's the elevator and to the left is the stairs up and down.
Right. So if you take the stair down, it takes you, right.
Stair down, takes you into the retail store, which is now, I guess, the, I don't know. I guess it's, I don't know what it is actually. Is it the daycare?
No, that is the retail store. At least that's what it's, the daycare.
So it takes you directly into the retail and then there's a door, and then there are doors that get you to the, underneath the pizza restaurant and then behind to another storage and behind to the, another daycare. What, what's the question? That the staircase?
I think the staircase, so if I look at the, if, if in the cellar, there are, there's only one staircase that directly leads from the daycare to the first level. And the other one would be the staircase. I think that is the staircase, the lobby staircase. But before the, if you look at the previously approved plan, where is the previously approved plan?
Where is that?
Yeah, but I saw this.
Yeah.
I did see the cellar plan. It was part of us. I, I, I reviewed it. Now I don't know why I can't find it.
You're looking for the new submission or the?
They previously approved seller. So the previously approved plan I'm looking at is eight, submitted eight.
Oh, 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 look at the letter of substantial compliance, the letter of substantial compliance, 1214-2004.
Okay, 1214, okay.
In that, there is a cellar plan that would be P2.
Okay, got it. So there, that main staircase went, did the same. It went to a retail store and then to this open
area.
Right. And then that led to a retail. So you're just saying now there's apparently kind of no separate corridor or something like that?
Yes, there isn't a separate landing area for, from the lobby for anybody to access. And also the retail footprint has increased. So the drawing to be revised.
Okay. Okay, I guess. Okay. Okay, to the extent the applicant asked question, more questions about it, they should ask us because I'm not 100% clear on what the issues are, other than that the cellar no longer shows a sep-
Right.
Doesn't really have a corridor anymore, but it didn't really have a corridor before.
The issue is the access, the means of egress and access to the daycare facility is that in any way being affected with the way the plan has been modified. And the second is the retail store that is existing on the lower level has increased from what has, was previously approved. So that needs to be reflected both in the plans and statements.
Okay, got it.
Are, are you saying it's increased because of that vertical separation in the letter of substantial compliance?
So the retail store that's on the south side, as part of the letter of substantial compliance, is a 421 square feet.
Are, are you saying because of, this is gone on the new plan?
Yes, yes. And it is.
I believe this is a footing and they are not, they elected not to show. It's not a, it's not space separation. I believe it's a footing element. So architecturally, that, that retail space is like that. Follow my cursor. It's like that.
That's the retail space. It's not a wall.
I believe.
Okay, if that's the case, if that's the case, if I'm just measuring, eyeballing it, the, the retail space to the left is shown as 571 square feet, which then would be a square footage buys, doesn't seem to match with 421 square feet. Then somewhere, something is wrong.
Okay, so they just have to check the area of the retail. Okay.
But I would like, if that's the case, the applicant should confirm that.
Okay. I guess the main issue is in the cellar, the existing daycare has rooms seven and eight that it accesses from that little staircase at the back.
Well, seven, eight, and nine.
I only see seven and eight.
Yes, seven and eight.
Seven and eight in the plan in the cellar. And it seems like that if you look at the, even though the doors swing the wrong way, it seems like the fire egress direction is up the staircase at the back, not at the front. See, the doors are arguably swinging the wrong way, even though the occupancy is very small in the rooms. I don't know why you would have a door swing in when you could have it swing out. But the, but the direction of the exit sign says, go up the staircase at the back. And since it's fewer than 75 people, you only need one means of egress. Because normally you wouldn't allow there to be egress through another occupied space, that retail store, up that staircase that's in the, towards the front of the building near the elevator.
Okay, so only one egress would be adequate for the amount of occupancy in the cellar.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think unless there's a special rule for, for daycare, which I don't know. And then the only question is, as you say, is if you have disabled access to the daycare then downstairs, then they have to go through the retail store from the elevator, which is a little weird. So that's just not clear. But, you know, they don't necessarily need disabled access to the cellar because they have the alternate opportunity on the first floor. And that's what the, you know, the reasonable accommodation is there, as long as there is an equivalence. So as long as the disabled worker or, or parent or student can be accommodated on the first floor, they shouldn't need internal access to the daycare downstairs.
Right. Thanks. The other question I had was, we just received set of photos this morning of the interior condition. Or maybe it was yesterday. The second floor where the trade school is located, it seems to be not occupied or, so I would like the applicant to clarify as to the status. Because that's really what the variance is.
It, we, we got it at 12:53, just to, for those who didn't see the photos, I didn't see the photos. Okay.
I also sent morning to.
You sent it also this morning?
I sent it yesterday morning.
I don't know. Anyway, okay. It came from submit at 12:53. So how do you, so there's no photos of the, well, actually, maybe that's the trade, oh no, that's the pizza restaurant. So you're saying the photos are showing, I see, they're showing the trade school office floors empty. Okay. Well, maybe that's why they're here to be allowed to have a trade school. I mean, luckily, that would be so great. Imagine waiting for approval before you actually install the thing. Um, okay. Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, before Vice Chair go, I, I checked the area and it sounds like she's right. The retail store area is based on a wall at the location indicated. So she's right.
Okay. So that thing that looks like a footing is actually, is either was thought of as a wall when they measured, even if it's not.
Yeah, based on the square footage of the retail store shown in the plan. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And so it's a correct areas. Okay, great, thanks. Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Yes, if I'm talking now about the two parking spaces, and I agree with both of you that it is an awkward layout in the front of the building because you would have to, using that center curb cut, drive on the sidewalk or back up on the sidewalk to get backed out into traffic, and that's problematic. But if you look at the previously approved plans, there were once two curb cuts, one in front of each parking pad, and that certainly is a safer option. So I'm wondering if we should suggest that they go back to that option of reinstalling two curb cuts if they're going to use those two spots as parking spots? Because it would make it a little bit safer, because then you can literally use one curb cut and kind of curve yourself into the spot and then make a sharp turn and go out forward, back out into traffic without having to back up on the sidewalk.
Okay, so, so part of the problem is I didn't, I saw that they submitted leases. I thought that was for more proof of continuous use or something like that. But so I didn't review the leases. But if they built in a parking space into their lease, we can't now say, sorry, you can't have, I mean, we can, of course, but it would mess them up a lot. Exposes them to a lawsuit, really, if they were.
Right, I agree.
Removed, yeah.
That's why I think the best bet is to change the curb cut to make it safer for everybody. So that was my first thing. And then I agree with you. I thought the leases were proof of continuous use. But being that, you know, DOB actually does not accept leases as proof of anything except intent to use, perhaps we should have them support those leases with the Google Street photos that I actually see for June 2019, October 2019, and October 2021, which at least will help support the, that the leases show that there was activity.
Okay, that's a good idea.
And let's see. And that's it. I also saw the, the proposed plan saying existing trade school on the first floor where the daycare was. I just figured it was an error.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. The main comment I have is about the trash enclosure along Cassina. I, it's as, although it's shown in the plan, however, the, the size of the enclosure itself is larger. It's taken about three and a half feet from the sidewalk, more than it should. It should be aligned with the wall of the building. But even, even if this is the way they built it, I believe it's, it's very insulting to people on the sidewalk to, to see like a trash enclosure that close to them while walking. So I, I, I believe it, they should like impose some sort of an action to eliminate this condition. Other than that, I, I believe you need to provide a compliance chart. They provided a condition chart. But in the condition chart, it, it looks like everything is like good. They said everything is complying. So they need to revise that and rename it as a compliance chart, not condition chart. Thank you.
I see. Well, this is a list of conditions and we say, are you in compliance with the list of conditions? So I get why they might have called it a conditions chart, but okay. Okay. Commissioner Shiveta? We cannot hear anything you say.
I have nothing further to add.
Okay. All right.
Appeals Calendar Continued Hearings, item number 26, 2017-4A, 339 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island.
So I have to admit, I'm not completely understanding this submission. We asked for a construction timeline and instead got a letter from the architect saying essentially they are working on the DOB filing. And then there's this box that shows up on my, okay. They're working on the DOB filings and an email from the owner saying they will commence the phase two when they get a permit to remove the tanks. Neither of those answers is a timeline. It's just telling us that they've sort of not very far. It tells us nothing about what their plans are, how they're going to do this, when we're ever going to see this work done. They also provided photos of frankly, the hideous eyesore of a site with the razor wire now removed. Yay, the way razor wire is removed, the site is still hideous and it's a blight on the neighborhood and they are perpetuating a blight. I'm not comfortable at all sending this applicant off into the wild if the work isn't to be started very soon. That's why the timeline is so important and very specific specifics about the timeline. I'd like to have a condition, kind of do this in stages. This is maybe picking up a little bit on, on the site yesterday, the Fountain Avenue site, where the board attempted to get things done sequentially. I'm wondering whether we can get at least the demolition and the phase two work begun within a very tight time period, because there's no reason why they haven't started the demolition. They could take this building down without implicating probably the phase two even. And then they begin the phase two, once the building is removed, at least removing the building and, and changing the fence will improve the, the character in the neighborhood. So as I say, we need a timeline and the owner and architect must be present to discuss this. Today at the hearing, I asked the project manager to reach out to the applicant's representative to make sure that the owner and architect are present at the hearing. And I hope that, that happened and that both of those parties listen. And if they don't, then I'm going to demand that they appear at the next week's hearing. If they don't show up, we have the power to even subpoena people. So we might have to do that here. Okay. All right, Vice Chair Shonda?
Comments?
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
No additional comments.
Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. The only comment I have is regarding the fence. I see that the, the piece of the wall of the, underneath the fence is very like dilapidated. It has severe cracks. Sounds like it's in very bad structural condition. And it might be an unsafe condition. So I just want to like direct them to correct that immediately. Thank you.
There were already, to pick up on this, I don't remember what the date was, but there was a violation, unsafe building or a failure to maintain violation on the site that seems to have been addressed somehow. I don't really know how. But I'm, I'm thinking, Ted, can you reach out to DOB and ask them to do an inspection on the site? That there's an unsafe, believed to be an unsafe wall that should be inspected?
Hey Chair, okay, I just wanted to confirm that is Stanwick Street. I'm sorry.
No, 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 sorry. That is.
63. I apologize.
339 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island, 2017-4-A.
Okay, I apologize. I was ahead. Okay.
That's okay. That's okay. So, yeah, so the concern is about the hazardous site, right? And since there's a specific issue of a potential collapsing wall, DOB should inspect.
Okay, definitely will request.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
What a pleasure to have a compliance officer on our staff. It's amazing. Okay, is that anything else, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shiveta?
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing further to add.
Okay, next. Okay, next.
Zoning calendar, continued hearings, item number 27, calendar number 2017 dash 262 dash BZ. 18 Stanwick Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, the last time we heard this was in June, and we had two commissioners who were very exasperated with the submissions. In particular, with respect to the, just one second. And with respect to the B finding, the consensus was that this would be the last chance to make a case. We have a letter of no objection from the fire department dated June 10th, 21, which I'm not sure was, we noted in the last hearing. We were provided with title search history that shows intervening city and HUD foreclosures and sales. That had the effect of separating the common post 1961 ownerships. Because this definitely was held in common with an adjoining property for a long time, but then there were foreclosures and HUD intervenes. And then they sell the properties all separately. A uniqueness map and chart was provided that better demonstrates that most of the vacant lots of similar size to the subject are owned in common with adjoining lots. I have to say, I'm not counting the ones shown on the list that are quote, "used in common" with the neighbor. Since the subject sites appear, sites appear also to be quote, "used in common." This could be a squatter or an unrecorded agreement, so there's really no way to, to understand what the arrangement is. When you see properties used in common, even though not held in common. I leave the financial analysis, as I always do, to Commissioner Ollie Brown. But note that the project costs went back down to approximately where they were the first time. After jumping up in May through, May though, for confusing reasons. This is, for confusing reasons, the loss on the first story above grade as of rights box is now less. That's just confusing to me. I never really understand why they move around so much. It's just a box. It's continue to be a box. I, I don't understand why the numbers would go up and down. And the return on the proposed is also less now. So even though the building got shorter and the apartments less nasty, the, the return on the proposed is less than it was in the first go round in May. Starting, just to start with the easiest aspect first, the plans were revised to improve the unit layout so that all rooms at least have windows, a small request. Hence, there's, these are now only one bedrooms instead of two bedrooms with landlocked or windowlocked living rooms. The ground floor was dropped to grade. I actually see no reason for the area way to the cellar level. Since the cellar can already be accessed from the interior stair and area ways are problematic from a maintenance, flood, and public safety concern. So even though the area way is located on their own property, I just don't think urbanistically, area ways are nice things. Unless it's in a, what we call an English basement, where it's actually taking you to a habitable level that's located far above grade. Those are really basement apartments, right? The good kind of basement apartments that are far more than 50% above grade. They're more like 75% above grade. I'd like them to explain the, again, the reason again for the area way. I don't even see an indoor trash management system. And now that we have a new mayor and there's actually some discussion again about managing New York City's trash. I personally believe that we should be looking into the public policy attack on our filthy streets. One of the reasons our streets are so filthy is there's never any place to put the trash in these new buildings. Unless it's a large building that comes with a compactor room and so on. And even then, they put, let's say, very nicely organized trash on the street, which is bizarre. No other city, as far as I know in the world, does this. So I, I think if you're going to justify at all this area way, then there needs to be trash storage in the cellar. And it needs to be a compactor, and the only reason you might have that area way is to bring the trash to the street only on pickup days. They need to show the materials of the side walls, and as a constant reminder, no exterior insulation foam system or vinyl siding is accepted. And by the way, for the longest time in the world, or not in the world, but for a very long time, this freestanding building will be visible on four sides. So you can't treat the two side walls as if there's already an adjoining property. There isn't one. It's vacant everywhere around here, which will, I will bring up in discussion in a minute. They need to explain also the mechanical rooms that are shown on the upper floors. They don't look like mechanical rooms. They look like laundry rooms. And I'd like to know why that's deducted from floor area. They need to show the lot area and FAR on the drawings. I believe the ask is 2.12 FAR if the deductions are accepted. Or 2.4 FAR if they're not accepted. I'd also like to know what in the world a construction floor area is, as indicated on the plan. Floor area is either zoning or gross, and gross includes the cellar. Whereas the so-called construction floor area does not. I don't understand who imagines that there's a term called construction floor area. But anyway, if we're building it, we build a cellar, so even a contractor has a cellar. Very confusing, fix that. The building only has a 14-foot rear yard for residential occupancy and backs up to the side lot line of another site that can be built full to the side lot lines. And more on that later, because it's going to be able to be a big building built full to the side lot lines. So I don't understand how a 14-foot rear yard could possibly be okay in this residential situation. Even the special permits under the section 73, 622, don't reduce rear yard depth to less than 20 feet. Section 23 dash 52 allows rear yard reductions beginning at 90 foot of lot depth. Reducing by six inches per foot. So that would allow, in this case, if we applied that regulation here, would allow a 1.5 foot to 4.5 foot reduction. Or a rear yard of 28.5 to 25.5 feet. So where does 14 feet come from and how can that be possibly justified? The lot depth, given the use, be different if it were a commercial use. I would even say you could have a 10-foot rear yard if it were a commercial use. The lot depth is 81 to 87 feet deep. And the project is drawn orthagonally rather than following the street line on that diagonal. So the building disadvantages itself as to its depth. And arguably would be an oddity as to the street wall for any adjoining development. So the, the, the street walls, if there were street wall continuity for the adjoining properties, this one would have this odd little triangular jog in it. And you know, it's, it's not like this is a great work of architecture or anything. This is more like an expedient decision, right? And I think it should follow the street line, which would give more floor area on the interior and allow for the rear yard to pull back something much more reasonable for residential use. And so I had. I had a, my main issue with this case wasn't so much whether there's a unique physical condition or a financial hardship, but of course, that's to be determined from further discussions. Mine had to do really with neighborhood character. And I'm, was very, very concerned that putting, putting a residential building in the middle of this M district where it's surrounded by vacant lots would have this become like a holdout. And would prevent the proper development of the surrounding lots. So it would block, right now it's an M11. It would block the possible conforming, first, commercial development of that 100 by 125 vacant lot area that's all around it. And when you look at the streetscape elevation that's provided, it, it tells, it only tells one half of the story. There's this freestanding building in the middle of nowhere on one frontage. But it's actually a freestanding building in the middle of nowhere on two frontages. So it would, so basically, yeah, so I was very concerned about this. And given the large residential developments that are on the opposite corners, I thought the best solution for this site is a rezoning, right? And the, and across the street, that's a C24 where there's commercial overlay. And on the other side, I think it's an R6, so not without an overlay. So I asked our staff, because I was so concerned about neighborhood character here. I asked our staff to reach out to City Planning Office in Brooklyn to talk to the Brooklyn Director at City Planning to find out like what they think of this proposal. And what we learned was that, and, and Jell and Chase, please, and Darrell, correct me if I'm getting this wrong. What they learned was that there had been a proposal to rezone this area, this particular site and, and area around to an MX, so a mixed-use district that would have, I believe it was an R6A, is that right? R6A at an M, M district that would allow three FAR, whatever that district is. Like an M1 with three FAR, like special, which is obviously the big problem about all these M1s, right, M11s. So what they said was that because, so that zoning didn't go ahead for whatever kinds of background reasons. But that they would consider again, and they thought it would be more successful now. They would consider again that same rezoning, which would bring this site in line with what's going on across the street. But to encourage mixed use, so then you could have commercial, industrial, whatever, mixed somehow or other with residential. So that gave me more, and then they said that this little building would be consistent, at least from a use point of view with that rezoning, except that of course, retail would have been expected on that round floor. But it's such a little building, squishing retail in, and then only two floors of residential, I'm not sure. So that made me feel better about this. But as we know, rezonings take forever. I'm hoping that some of this conversation is heard or telegraphed to the owner of the adjoining properties. And that maybe, even if we were to approve this little application, that maybe the owners would find it more desirable to purchase the site now and include it in their larger project, because it will pose a, an impediment really to the ease of construction of a larger project. So, did I get that right? Darrell, Jerryl, Jello?
Yes, yes.
Good, thank you. All right, there is still open seeker on this. The EAS was, has still not been revised to reflect any of the, the new, new work. Or the new submissions as we see them, yeah, okay. And is a new consultant apparently on the EAS, okay. So Vice, well actually, let me go right to the B findings, since otherwise it might be a futile conversation. So Commissioner Ollie Brown?
So they did what we asked, in that they went back to the original report and then worked on the items that we thought were important to be adjusted downwards or upwards. While also changing the configuration of the apartments to become one-bedroom apartments. So what ended up happening is the site value went back down to the original site value. Because what caused the development costs to go so high in the second report was they tripled the site value. So they brought it back down to like 229,000, which was the same as the first report, which I thought was fair. They changed the comparables for the residential rents, because now they're one-bedroom apartments instead of two-bedroom apartments. And so that adjusted those residential rents downward to 2,025 monthly for each apartment. Which I felt was more, that's fine. I didn't think it was too low. These, these apartments are in a very small building. The only thing that they really offer people is rooftop space. That's it. There aren't a whole list of amenities here, so I thought, okay, 2,025 is fine for that. The construction cost were reduced slightly than the first report. And they used Marshall and Swift, I believe, as some kind of a guide. But I feel that if you look at the soft costs, I remember having conversations with Marshall and Swift. They said that they would not add on any fees, architectural engineering fees or boring fees, because that's covered in Marshall and Swift, yet that's in their soft costs. If you were to remove it, that would bring the development costs for the as-of-right down under $300 a square foot to about $288 a square foot. And I will defer to Nasser on whether he still feels that's too high. But I could just say that if you do reduce the construction cost to 288 a square foot, the as-of-right is still not going to work. The delta is just a little too wide to be closed. As for the proposed, I, I think you had said that the return was the same on the proposed. Is that what you said?
No, no, I said that it was, the return was lower, which was confusing to me. Because I thought, I didn't really see why a better apartment would cost, would have a lower return. But now I see, because you're using a different kind of a comp situation.
Right, you're using a different comp, which is leading to lower income. And so that's reducing the return, and the cap rate was lowered as well, which was a good thing. So I will defer to Nasser on the final word as to the development costs, but I felt the income was valid. And I felt that for all intents and purposes, we could accept this report.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I, I believe if you look at the construction cost, I, I focused on that as of right, that one story without seller. If you look at the construction cost presented from the construction cost estimate, the total development cost is about 862,000. If you divide that by 2,000, which is the total square footage of the building, that takes you to about $425 per square foot.
Hold on, can I just break in? You know that you're, you folded the site value into that. It's 862,000, but the site value takes 230,000 of that.
You're right, you're right, that's correct. Give me, give me one second, hold on.
I'm, I'm just guessing that Commissioner Ollie Brown already did that math.
I believe so, I just, yeah, 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 that's correct, that's true. Yeah, so I, the, the only, the only comment I, I, I wanted to say, and I want to put it on the record for like further discussions on other cases, that when the Marshall and Swift, they came to about $200 per square foot total cost. And I recall that Commissioner Brown indicated that she communicated with M&amp;S. And they said that the soft cost is more or less included in their estimates.
Not all of the soft costs, only a few of the soft costs.
Okay, okay, but at, at least portion of the soft cost is included. So I just, I just want to make sure that this is on the record. I, I, I believe, I believe that cost presented is, is not that like bad, like previous. But I, I, I agree that the rear yard need to be relooked at. And, and, and I believe that's what we advised them last time, to, to look at that building. Try to like listen to mass of the building, and, 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 and I believe this is, this is a small case that we should like move forward. So if the, if the rear yards gets like dropped to, let's say, 25 foot, I would be okay to vote on it. I, I have no issue with that number of floors.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so in terms of the rear yard, I'm not sure that you have a viable project if you, if the rear yard is 25. But it might be 20, and then get rid of that front yard setback thing. Um, and then get rid of that front yard setback thing, which would make up for some of the loss in the rear. I mean, I think that would make up for some anyway. Um, so yeah, because we want it to still be occupiable units. And I'm sorry, I don't want to cut off um, the vice chair, then I'll go back to my other comments. Go ahead. Vice Trishonda.
So um, thank you. Um, I think um, I, at an uh, earlier hearings, I stated the applicant need the findings of uniqueness and hardship. And I'm glad to hear this has been uh, reaffirmed by um, by uh, the other commissioners. I'm waiting to hear from Commissioner Shippa on this also. Uh, in terms of the neighborhood context, uh, yes, uh, the rezoning is still on the uh, on the table. And the fact that it would allow this kind of the use as is before us, um, I'm satisfied with it. And um, I think what happens in the future and how the market uh, makes use of this information and decides to all work together or work independently or bid each other out. It's not in our hands and um, given un- unknown elements of that, I would be satisfied uh, with regards to this application. I though however, agree that the building uh, location, uh, it should be more respectful of the um, the orthogonal uh, lay uh, the frontage. And the building should be pulled um, to the street line and should be aligned to it. And uh, with regards to the rear yard, yes, fourteen foot is less. Though I was thinking of, while it may not apply to this particular zoning lot, uh, because it did not exist uh, as of December fifteen nineteen sixty-one. Um, zoning resolution section twenty-three forty-nine uh, has a provision for side law, uh, for, um, sorry, for uh, uh, narrow lots.
No, not narrow, shallow. This is a shallow lot, not a narrow lot.
Sorry, I, I meant shallow lots. Um, and, and that it allows for a provision to reduce the depth of the rear yard by certain percentage, provided you were pre-sixty-one, I believe.
Um, but you don't know, that's the one I already mentioned, but it doesn't get you very far. Yeah, I said, um, if you're ninety feet or less deep, you can take six inches off per foot. This is a new provision was added fairly recently. Um, so under
Twenty-three fifty-two. You're talking about twenty-three fifty-two.
Yeah. So it would get you down to either twenty-eight point five feet in one corner and twenty-five point five feet in the other.
I, I missed that part of your discussion. I missed that part of this. So, okay. So in that case, it still would be more than twenty foot. So if they can, um, okay, all right.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I mean, I, I do agree that if, if the units become too small, then you're not talking about two units per floor. You're talking about one unit per floor. I don't know what that does to the numbers. Um,
Or it maybe it becomes a studio.
Um, I don't know. So I don't know what any of that does to the numbers. We just looked at the financials that have one bedroom apartments, right? And they're not big one bedrooms. They're little guys. So um, I mean, normally if you think about like townhouses, like the classic row townhouse in the city, where those are usually fifty foot depths, um, but sometimes wider, not necessarily wider. A lot of the times they've been converted into front and back apartments over the course, you know, since the nineteen tens they were converted. Um, and those are little apartments, but the advantage to them is they have very high ceilings, very high, especially the parlor floor has a high ceiling, whereas this doesn't benefit from that. So you're in this low ceiling teeny apartment front to back. Um, so you know, then it's like, it shouldn't be two apartments per floor. It should be one or duplexes, or you turn it into a townhouse. I mean, actually, tell you the truth, the reality of this neighborhood, if, if the owner were just a little more patient, is if this were rezoned to an MX district and the owner refused to sell to the neighbors, eventually the neighbors will build an apartment building that's like the ones across the street. And then this little site will be a choice single family home because it's in an excellent neighborhood for that. And it's a perfect size for a single family. And I think it would probably sell better than the way it's renting. But you have to be patient with your market. I mean, owners know this. You have to be patient.
Well, we don't know how real estate gets played. There are so many ways of, you know, that's one approach, but there could be other ways of, you know, having a leg up to negotiate. Uh, there's so many other things.
Yeah, sure. Well, it's not that we don't know. We do know. We just don't know what will happen with this site. Yeah. Okay. I'm just suggesting that there's a lot of different ways you could, you could leverage this little site. Um.
This is a very one bedroom-ish apart neighborhood. A lot of young people are moving in here and they're like, they're either sharing uh, an apartment or they're are, uh, they're in their one bedroom or studio. So a lot of this new construction, they tend to have that.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's inside of all those buildings. So, but anyway, okay. Uh, Commissioner Shiveta.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, I found the submission responsive. Um, I, I too shared uh, the, the question about the, how the building is situated and why it's not uh, aligned with the street line. I, I assumed it might have been cost related to build, to have an angleized building because the street line is at an angle. I'm not sure. I'd like to hear more about that, uh, although I, I'm satisfied with this application.
Okay. It's just frankly, it's just easier to draw. It's easier to draw.
I really can't believe it's that. I, I can't.
You know, there are, there is another way of doing it. If, if you want to, if you want to maintain the area we on the ground floor, you, you maybe you make, keep it, uh, make it and keep it in an angle, but you extend the second floor above that, which also acts as a shed and, and as, as a shelter over that area way. And then you have that rest of the street. So um, maybe the ground floor remains the same is because you need to maintain the staircase, but the staircase can be moved in an angle. So there are ways to kind of enhance that uh, um, street frontage without really, and that overhang would be about three or four feet. It's not really, you can't overhang from the foundation wall at that height and um, without an added cost. So I think that
As long as it's higher than whatever the code says, there's a minimum height overhang. I, I don't remember what it is.
But if it's within your property line, it shouldn't be an issue. As long, it has to be eight feet because the second floor.
Yeah, right. So, I don't know. Okay. So, right. Um, okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Item number twenty-eight. Calendar number two thousand nineteen dash sixty-six dash BZ fifteen Terrace View Avenue Manhattan. Okay, we were only waiting for a few modifications to this. Um, sorry, I have a lot of notes. One sec. There we go. Okay. We have a very strongly written letter dated January twenty-first, twenty-two in opposition from the community board land use committee that apparently includes the community board's review of the applicant's most recent submission to the BSA. Community board resubmitted also that letter. Um, please mute yourselves. Um, resubmitted with that letter, um, their twenty-twenty resolution and letter. The main objection from the one twenty-one letter is, appears to be traffic congestion during construction and the general belief that the hardship is not established. Um, I, I have to admit, at this point, I find the objections, the really ardent objections confusing, um, because we've changed the project so significantly. Um, but anyway, an improved uniqueness study was provided that shows the lots owned in common or quote, related to adjacent lots. Um, the related to as opposed to the used by, uh, which of the prior application, related to seems to be um, some overly complex contractual or historical relations between these properties that I didn't want to get into. Um, I do want to clarify for the record, however, real, this is my belief anyway, that I actually don't believe what's driving this hardship here is the lot area. As I don't want future variance applicants to argue that this board entertained a variance for an eight thousand one hundred seventy-five square foot lot with a hundred eight feet of frontage once, so should do so again. Um, the M one one in which this site is located is oddly configured. It's isolated and, and it's the M one one that's oddly configured. It, this portion is isolated and the entire M one one is subdivided by a deep slope that makes it impossible to join one side of the M one one to the other side in order to assemble a larger parcel, that parcel that can be accessed from Terrace View. So it's, you know, when I look at this, I was thinking the city planning, um, just who decided to work on this uh, zoning designation, zoning map designation, didn't visit the area. When they saw the map, they saw it as a two dimensional situation and they drew a shape around it and they said, voila, M district, right? And nobody went over and said, wait a minute, there's a cliff between this part and that part. So instead, this property owner and the others up on Terrace View are, are dealing with this bizarre affectation of a map maker, maker who didn't go visit the site. Um, the result then is um, a very small M one one up on the top of the hill and another much larger parcel down the hill, one side inaccessible to the other. The upper portion is particularly challenged for manufacturing uses because it is bisected and on top of everything else by two existing residential buildings, which further isolates the subject parcel within an isolated portion of the M one one with the only access point being Terrace View. So I, I'd like our council to make very careful special note of all of those unique conditions so that we don't get next week an application from somebody saying, you just granted a variance for an eight thousand square foot lot with a hundred eight feet of frontage. I don't understand. This is impossible. You have to let me do the same. My site has a little kink in the corner. It's unique, right? So um, the seventy foot depth of the Ampli size lot does however, pose a problem for as of right development in this zoning district, in this zoning district, in this particular location because there is a twenty foot front yard requirement due to the site's adjacency to a residence district boundary line. So in this M district on a residential district boundary line, there's a front yard requirement. There's never a front yard requirement in other, other portions of an M district. This would therefore reduce the allowable building footprint to a fifty foot depth at the first floor and force a two-story building to ha- to have a required twenty foot rear yard in order to use all of its floor area, leaving a second floor footprint depth of thirty feet. Now you're getting into a really odd building for any kind of viable commercial use, manufacturing use, blah, blah. The proposals also included use of the cellar, the as of right proposals also included use of the cellar built into the slope to try to overcome the setback requirements. This result was demonstrated to be impractical for any viable commercial use, creating this kind of very stepping, stepping project that made it not really viable for commercial use. A parking garage, which had been suggested by the community board as being something needed in the neighborhood, was also studied as a potential use. Um, and com- um, and as I said, community need and was found to be impractical, actually due to its location all the way up there at the top of um, the terrace, a terrace view. So um, that actually no one would use it, or it's just impractical to be used, right? So again, our council needs to be clear to make those distinctions in the resolution. Um, the plans have been revised um, uh, to respond to our concerns with the fifth floor setback. Um, and uh, now the setback is twelve and to fifteen feet from the front wall line. Um, that is the street line. Um, front wall line is located on a street line without the twenty foot setback. Um, I'd like the applicant, please to show all of the setback dimensions on the fifth floor and roof plans, not just the one dimension. Because then there's a lot of play. If there's no dimension, then we don't know what ultimately can be built. So please show always all of the setback dimensions throughout that fifth floor um, and on the roof. Um, my biggest problem actually is with the elevator bulkhead. It's twenty-two foot, six inches above the roof. I don't see why that's necessary today. In the old days, when there was only one way to build an elevator, you might have a really high elevator overrun. But now you have hydraulic lifts that can lift all the way to a building of this height. And you also have machine room less lifts, um, which can lift very high, two hundred something feet. Um, so that would reduce the height of the bulkhead to the same, more or less as the stair bulkhead. And it wouldn't be such an, really, it's an eyesore, I have to say. Um, and, and the renderings, which they very helpfully provided, show how unnecessarily visible and prominent the bulkhead is from the street. So I would like them to change it, change the elevator system to either hydraulic or machine room less or any other technology that exists that I didn't find, um, that reduces the height of the bulkhead significantly. Um, the ground floor parking garage is partly shielded from pedestrians by a more decorative fencing helps less, hence less prison-like than it was before. I hope they really do do a quality job with the quality, with the ironwork. Um, I wish there was a way for us to designate quality in these BSA cases. I'm like getting to, to be on the verge of wanting to issue specification sheets that talk about the gauge of the metal and what kind of masonry and all of that. I think the board in the nineteen forties did that. Um, floor area deductions are being taken, uh, taken for interior public corridors. I'd like to know what the reason for that is. Um, if you have a quality housing building, um, housing qual- quality housing building, um, you, um, you're only allowed to take the corridors as deductions, um, fifty percent of them when the corridor has a window. If you look at section twenty-eight dash fourteen, that's the rule. When the corridor has a window, you can take it fifty percent. When it doesn't, you can't. Um, so no floor area deduction chart per floor was provided, um, only for the entire building. So I couldn't actually, I had to do the math myself to figure out what was being taken. So please, a floor area deduction calculation chart per floor. Um, and as I say, those deductions under quality housing are only um, permitted when all the quality housing criteria are met. So the provision of all the things that are in um, the quality housing section twenty-eight dash, oh, oh, I guess, uh, and can, and on. So I'd like to know that all the criteria are met. So we should have a chart that shows that. Um, fire department needs to verify they're okay with the changes because there's kind of an odd statement in the cover letter that they took out the fire department access to something because of something. And I just didn't understand why they took it out and what the something was at all. So I'd like fire department, please to review the newest submission um, and make sure they're okay with it. Um, there still is a fire department um, sort of access route shown on a portion of the roof. But um, please take a look again. Um, at the board's request and to respond to community board concerns, community concerns, the applicant prepared a construction impact assessment using the methodology prescribed in the secret technical manual for larger projects. This project is small and as such does not trigger such an assessment. But the screening analysis based on the sewered park rezoning methodology reveals that at most there will be thirty-five workers at the site. The majority using public transit to get to work, which is typical of construction workers on all sites actually. Um, as long as there's public transit. And at most, a daily average of thirteen trucks to deliver and remove equipment, materials, debris and concrete. The average is twenty workers per day and nine trucks per day over the eighteen month construction period. And it goes up only during certain kind of heavy muster times. So um, and um, on-street parking demand of ten cars uh, until onsite parking becomes Parking becomes available for a few cars with a parking availability study. That shows adequate spaces available to accommodate this daytime activity. So we're just talking about ten cars looking for parking in the neighborhood. And according to the parking's um availability study, on-street study, there was ample parking available for that. Um, especially because this is daytime activity, not evening parking. Um, I note that the chart and the description above it on that study have some is has mismatch and needs to be corrected. The chart says one thing and the narrative says another thing, so correct that. In short, um, the construction impact is minimal and certainly not more inconvenient than any relatively short term construction project in the city. You know, when there's construction in your neighborhood, you you deal with it and that's just uh how what it's like living in the city. Um, I have a gigantic tower under construction on my corner for the last two years, so. Um, okay. Vice Chair Shonda.
First of all, I want to thank the applicant for working with us all throughout this whole process and has been very responsive. To all the comments that we have raised and have have been raising and also the comments that the community board has raised. I have to point out the last submission from the community, but the latest submission from the community board that we got. Um, is be uh is from twenty twenty, the community board eight resolution that was submitted. It's dated uh five nine twenty twenty, so.
No, 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 sorry, there's a cover letter from twenty twenty one. That's January twenty first twenty one, to which the author attached the community board's twenty twenty review. Okay.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the review is from twenty twenty.
No. The letter, there's a twenty one letter that's very long, that says they held a meeting.
No, that letter, I, is this the letter from, okay, I I just want to be clear, is this the letter with the photos and from uh Mister? Murder, that's the letter that was sent to us back in uh. If you look at the submission of eight twenty one twenty twenty, it's the same letter, I I I compared it. Paragraph to paragraph, photos to photos, it's the same.
Are you saying is the text is the same?
Same. With the same set of photographs. If you look at the submission from the testimony of dated eight twenty one twenty twenty. So all I'm saying.
No, no, but the the cover letter, sorry, the cover letter says we met last month. To discuss the new submission. I think.
I. Don't see that cover letter, I honestly speaking, I don't see that's that is cover letter. What I see is the twenty twenty one oh one twenty one CBA to BSA Terrace View letter, that's the one you're referring to?
No, twenty one one twenty one twenty two Terrace View LU Resolution. It's the last thing on the list of stuff, because it's the last document we've received. One twenty one twenty two Terrace View LU Resolution. Um, and I'll I'll just read the.
Right, it says whereas the following hearing and due consideration, the land use committee, uh, that's from twenty twenty. Uh, so it's referring to every condition from twenty twenty, did not.
No, hello, hello, there is a letter. There is a letter that's January twenty first twenty twenty two that's written by Mister Mirdler. It's a separate letter that goes through everything.
Yes.
How the construction's gonna really um be bad for the neighborhood, shows photos.
Commissioner Oddly Brown, that is the letter that is, that was written back, that was submitted to the board back in.
No, 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 so this is.
Twenty one twenty twenty.
I'm just gonna read it, okay? Because I need to clarify, I'm reading the same thing as Commissioner Ollie Brown is saying. It starts off with saying, thou- whereas following a hearing June one twenty twenty, blah blah. Then it says, um, whereas the land use, I'm going down several wherestes, not that one. Whereas the land use committee reiter- reiterates and reaffirms, it's this one. Whereas the land use committee reiterates and reaffirms the fundamental findings heretofore made respecting this application. And then it talks again, then you go down to the third paragraph of this whereas, which you have to scroll down a little bit more. And then it says, the application particularly in its discussion of vehicular access on page five, six. Of the January fifth twenty twenty two amended statement of facts. You see that at the very bottom of that page that you're on. Yep, so there, so this is a new submission that reiterates a lot of the stuff that they said before. And then updates their review based.
I did not see this, but I did not go this far down, I just read the first part of the whereas, okay.
And it's adopted January thirteen twenty twenty two.
Okay.
Very bottom.
Oh, I think with that said, I would say that. Uh, I would reiterate, the applicant has been very responsive to all the comments that were raised. Uh, one of the main comments was lack of parking uh uh in the initial probably uh submission. The applicant is provided, is proposing to provide ample parking on the site in addition to reducing the total number of units on the site. Um, so I think with that, the amount of traffic impediments and parking issues is greatly reduced. Uh, furthermore, the applicant has submitted a a very thorough, I would say, for a site of this small magnitude. Uh, construction analysis, uh, construction impact study, which is never called for, for such uh site of per secr manual. But has provided that analysis. And with all that, I feel the applicant is adequate to response, responded to everything that has been posed, so I'm very satisfied with this application.
Okay, Commissioner Brown.
I think that you chair have laid out a summary of the uniqueness finding that I think is extremely well done. In that it really will limit the ability of this case to be applicable to other situations. So I think that was an awesome summing up of what's going on here at this site. Um, I looked at the impact of moving that apartment back from the front of the building to the back of the building. Um, and its impact on the financials and there's a minimal impact on the financials. It does lower the construction costs ever so slightly. And the income goes down even slighter and that really is due to a greater vacancy and and um vacancy collection. Um allowance, and so therefore the return just jumps ever so slightly upwards. From like five point five one percent to a five point six five. And so I'm fine with this new um design on the rooftop, it doesn't impact the E finding that much.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair, I uh I have no further comments, but I just wanna like indicate that according to the letter that we dated. Twenty twenty two that we got from the community board. I believe they do have concerns regarding the parking as well, it's not just the like the headache during the construction process. Uh, and I believe the applicant has provided sixteen parking spots, which I believe. Should be, should be fine for for the residents parking, but I would, I would like. Like add a condition just to make sure that this parking is gonna be, is gonna be fully used by the residents of the building.
Yeah, that's actually a requirement of um the zoning regulations. And the only way you're allowed to do what we've seen in another building, we did this recently, what's known as a recapture, is if the. Um, so let's say renting out to others is if there's no, nobody wants the parking space inside the building. Like if there's sixteen parking spaces and they're all offered to, I forget how many apartments there are on this building, they're all offered to the building. They're not free, you have to pay for them, right? So some people will say, I don't want them, I'm gonna park on the street or maybe I don't have a car, I don't know. And so if the parking space be is held vacant for a long time. The owner has the right to offer the parking space to others in the neighborhood to park. However, within if if the owner gets notice that um from a tenant or resident. That they wanna be able to have a parking space, then that's thirty days notice to the person who is. Occupying the space from outside the building, that they have to give up their parking space. And then the space is recaptured by a resident of the building, that's the zoning regulation right now. To prevent um parking garages from being empty, which we unfortunately see with commercial parking garages. Because they don't have that recapture provision, the accessory commercial.
Is there any limitations on the parking? Like that price for the parking?
No, not not that I'm aware of, I mean, I think. Department of Consumer Affairs, Department of Consumer Affairs regulates parking garages. So they're the ones who I assume set the rates and things like that, there must be something that goes on with regulation. It's not related, it's not in the zoning, it's Department of Consumer Affairs that handles the 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 permits. For operating parking garage.
So how about this, if the if I'm the landlord and I believe that renting this uh the sixteen spots as as parking. Would be more profitable to me and and instead of like presenting a spot at, let's say fifty bucks a month. Or a hundred bucks a month, I I offer it to the tenants for three hundred a month, just to to push them not to take it. And then I didn't, how can we like stop and abuse like that?
So without knowing more from the Department of Consumer Affairs, I don't really wanna get into this conversation. We could research this question, but you know apartment buildings throughout the city have parking garages, as you know. And um very, very often, they're used by the tenants, right? But there are some tenants who either don't have cars or don't wanna pay even a hundred dollars a month. Or whatever, right? So um I'm not aware of may except maybe some of the, yeah, I'm not aware of any parking that's free. In a building. Even, you know, I used to actually borrow somebody else's parking spot at the.
I'm I'm not concerned.
Sorry, you're breaking up, it's hard to hear you.
The reason, the reason I'm.
You're breaking up.
One, one second, let me.
I, I. Yeah, you're frozen, actually.
Is is that better?
You're frozen, so.
Hello?
Yeah, you're still not so great, but start talking a little bit more.
Yeah, what I said is I'm not concerned.
No, it's not working.
It's a car and and because of the exaggerated price, he he's not gonna be able to like rent a spot. Or he's not gonna be willing to rent a spot, so and 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 because of the circumstances. Because Terrace Ave is is kind of like very narrow uh route. And and the concerns from the community board, I I I believe that we should make sure that this parking parking. Is the sixteen spots are gonna be used by by the tenants of that building, so we're not imposing additional. Parking to the to the area.
Can I just say something? If if they were doing what you suggested, which is to say to the tenants, we're gonna have parking at four hundred. Or eight hundred dollars so that tenants don't take it. And then they lower it to three hundred so the neighborhood takes it, you're still getting cars off the street.
Well, that's true, but I don't even think.
Why are we having this argument? Because we can't prove it one way or another, so let's just, can we move on?
Well, I need to, what I do need is, wait a second, before you go on, Commissioner Shabeta has not had a chance to speak. So before we have a debate about this, if we're having one, um, let's ha- allow Commissioner Shabeta to speak, I know and Commissioner Ollie Brown doesn't want to debate about this. Commissioner Shabeta, go ahead.
Thank you.
Cannot hear you, cannot.
Since we're we're still on the topic about parking, I'm not, I'm not sure that uh we should be in a position. To create conditions on uh you know, the financial ability. Of uh an individual property, um, and I and 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 there's there's a. And while I understand that we do have a a wide way of discretion, that there's a a lot of. Uh, larger legal questions that will come into play if we start going down this road and I don't think that. I also don't think it's necessarily appropriate, uh, because for for one. Um, it it doesn't serve any benefit to whoever for renting uh at a certain price. It it doesn't really change anything, you know, uh, the market would decide and people would make their appropriate decisions. You wouldn't wanna have an empty spot and I don't think you have a preference onto who gets it. That, but so that's just my position on that. With regard to the application, the rest of the application, I I was very happy with the submission. I think applicants council did a great job, uh, I, it was very responsive and I I have no further questions on this.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so bef- I don't wanna spend any more time on the parking because I don't feel like we're in this body at this moment. Informed enough about what the parking regulations are. If if what you're suggesting were the case, I think there would be total havoc in the city. And I do think that the Department of Consumer Affairs heavily regulates parking garages. So without knowing what it is they actually do, I don't feel even comfortable about talking about this. It's just showing really, to put it frankly, no other way, our ignorance about a discipline and I don't wanna. It's bad enough. So can we move on on this and happy to do research? Um, and and fill in the information more because of course we have lots of cases that have parking garages, so. Even even low income housing has parking garages, so or parking lots, right? Okay, um, okay, I think that's it then.
Okay, item number twenty nine.
Calendar number two thousand nineteen dash two ninety four BZ, two forty one dash two forty three Throop Avenue, Brooklyn.
I thought this is adjourned.
Oh yeah, sorry, this one, yeah, yeah, that's true, this one's adjourned, thank you, we announced this um at the yesterday's hearing that it would be adjourned. Um, uh, because we directed the applicant to change, to work on their submission, okay.
Okay, all right, apologies, this item is adjourned.
Yeah.
New cases, item number thirty, calendar number twenty twenty one dash fifty two dash BZ. One thirty four dash twenty four, one fifty ninth street, Queens.
Okay, um, oops. I think we have proper service, but I didn't note it, so I just need someone to check that um quickly. Um, I see someone in the in the waiting room ways it raising their hand. Um, this is a, this is a review session. Um, and so we don't take public testimony until after we move to the public hearing, okay? Uh, and which will be shortly, I think this is our last case on the review session. Um, if someone could just check proof of service, I I didn't.
I believe it was.
Okay, but more than belief, can you, can someone? Because I have, I'm required by a law to state that service was proper. So that's why I need to make sure it really was as opposed to believe it.
It was, the proof of hearing notice was service and so.
Thank you.
Uh, the initial application, I'm looking at the documents.
Okay, okay. Thank you, is that NASA showing that so quickly?
It's Jella.
That's Jella showing it so.
Me, yes.
Okay, oh wait, no, no, that says twenty third day of August, oh no, that's the, that's the.
This is the initial, this is the initial service if you wanna see it, and then um I can scroll down completely.
No, that's good.
Okay, and then this is, sorry, this is the hearing notification.
Right, this is actually kind of good that you're displaying this, I don't think the public has any idea. How much we go through to prove that people have been properly notified, so this is really good proof of service. Um, when I say really good, it's because you see that there's a stamp there from the post office indicating all the recipients of the notice of hearing. Um, that's really excellent, thank you, I appreciate that you showed that. Okay, so if I could just get that little box to go away, okay, in front of my text, okay. The community board, um, again, that's like proof of initial service, the community board heard this, they they recommend however denial. Um, stating the applicant failed to demonstrate that the new construction would not be a hindrance to the neighbors. As well as to the community, the committee finds that the proposed construction would be unduly burdensome. The committee finds that the proposed construction would be unduly burdensome to the adjacent neighbors and would not be beneficial to the neighborhood, therefore the committee unanimously voted to not recommend this request for a variance. Um, there's also a letter of objection citing crowding and inappropriate side yard waiver. My comments are that they need to show compliance with the front yard planting requirements in twen, section twenty-three dash four fifty-one. Um, a very thorough deed search establishes that the subject lot has been owned separate from adjoining lots since prior to nineteen sixty-one. Um, um. But what's a little odd about those facts are the photographs that show the subject site apparently being used by the adjacent property owner with a continuation of the fence at the rear, a continuous front garden and maintained lawn and other telltale signs I'd like them to explain, and the one reason um, that that's relevant is because uh, in other applications for variances we talk about uh, the uniqueness of a site, and we talk about a site that's being held under common ownership as uh, being a site that wouldn't qualify for a variance um, with an adjacent site. And we also sometimes mention sites that are used in common with an adjoining lot. Or then there was the comment about related to the adjoining lot, so I don't understand what that is. So I need it, the used in common is what might be the case here, and I'd like to understand better what that is. Um, I note that the uniqueness chart, which is called study area analysis chart, um, which by the way was very well assembled and organized, distinguishes this site from others that are, and that's where I bring up the same point, are quote, used as a yard slash parking unquote by an adjacent lot. So this one seems to be used as a yard by an adjacent lot. Uh, I would just like to verify for the record also that all the lots that are in that study are held in common ownership with their vacant adjacent site. Except for the three that are quote squatted by the neighbor. I, I just wasn't a hundred percent sure on that chart whether we're only talking about three or four sites that were quote squatted by the neighbor and that all the other sites that were used in common with an adjoining property are actually held in common. Um, in common ownership. And in, in the case of the subject site, is the neighbor squatting or does it have permission? Um, so then, the side yard and house with character studies um, that were provided are also very well done and show that the proposal is not atypical of the neighborhood. The ask actually is quite minimal. Um, there was a two thousand seven approved and permitted um, new building application for this site for a one-family dwelling. Um, they should provide plans. Um, that permit is now on hold, and I don't know why that is. Could they explain why the permit's on hold? Um, there's also a stop work order on the property, so please explain that, uh, even though it doesn't seem like there's any work, but there is a stop work. Um, the zoning district, um, and this may be the reason for the hold of the stop work order. The zoning district has been the same since two thousand five. As of two thousand five, only detached and semi-detached but not zero lot line buildings are permitted in this R three-one. The, it was an R three-two prior to two thousand five, which did allow zero lot lines. So I'm guessing that what actually happened, it's not uncommon in the architecture world for the architect to not know that the zoning changed. Because they start working on the project just before the zoning change. And they don't go back and check, has there been any change in the zoning? And then they file the drawings, and then Department of Buildings accepts the filing and may even issue a permit, and then at some point realizes, wait a minute, there's been a zoning change, and then issue stop work orders. I mean that before there's even been any work, so there's no vesting of the, um, of the right under the prior zoning. Um, so I'm guessing that's what happened, but I'd like clarification on that. And I believe those are all of my comments, and I'm just checking. Okay, yeah, okay, Vice Chair Shonda.
Yeah, I agree with your disapplication. I thought right from the beginning, it's been very thorough in all its submission. And uh, I thought the vacant lot study was interesting, um, especially the distinction that you stated. But I, I think overall, um, you know, in this case, even if the uh, owner is um, the butting owner is squatting or using the adjust, uh, the subject site with the permission. The fact that it is not a blight, I see that as a bl, as a plus. The fact that that vacant lot, the subject vacant lot is being used um, as an open space that is being used by the neighbor, it's, it's actually for the time being until it can be developed, it is not being misused. And it is uh, being respectful of the neighborhood by not being an empty lot that's collecting dust and, and it's being maintained. So I see this as a positive that even if the person was squatting or with the permission of the owner was using the site, it is being maintained properly, and now the applicant is before us seeking um, uh, the waiver for side yard. Uh, while meeting all the other conditions, especially uh, uh, finding D. So I did not have any issues with any of the findings uh, that the app, um, and the analysis. And um, I was satisfied with this application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ali Brown.
I too am satisfied with the application. I think it's actually very modest to have a fourteen-foot wide home. They're not taking advantage of the various, uh, the variance situation and trying to get more than what others around them have. So I'm okay with this.
But you did fa, find it met the findings, most importantly, right?
Yes.
That, okay. Um, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I did look at the application, I'm satisfied with it. Uh, I believe it's a very modest ask. And I'm, I'm okay to move forward on the application, thank you.
So I, I, I have to ask this again, cuz we have five findings, and in the nineteen seventies, the resolution read having made the findings we find. We can't, we don't do that anymore, right? So please, everyone, I need you to go back and make the five findings to show that we made the five findings. So I'll go back to Commissioner Sheta, let's go through the five findings, unique physical condition. You don't need to financials because it's a single-family home.
Yes.
Okay, and then
It's a small, it's a small narrow lot, so I believe it, it does meet the uniqueness finding A. And, 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 and I believe it meets the other finding as well.
Commissioner Ali Brown, you wanna try that again?
Okay, so I would say it's, it is unique in that it is only one of three similarly situated lots within twelve hundred feet. So if we were to offer variances to all of them, we would not be in any way rezoning the neighborhood. So I feel it meets the uniqueness finding. As for B, not applicable here because it is the single-family home. As for C, it is surrounded by detached and semi-detached, single and two-family homes. There would be a one-foot side yard on one side, which come added to the side yard of the adjacent lot equals nine feet, four inches separation on that one side that has the smaller side yard. So I'm okay with that. The other side yard is as of right, I believe at five feet. It's all that's required on that side, so I'm okay with that. I feel that the lot, the home width on the lot is within the widths of other homes on the block. The a, average home width is twenty-two feet, five inches. And there are two other homes on the block that are on twenty-foot wide lots that are fifteen feet wide. So this one at fourteen feet wide definitely falls into the character of the other narrower homes on that block. I don't believe this is self-created. A Sanborn map from nine, the nineteen eleven shows the lot has been in configuration since at least that point, and a title search shows this lot was never in common ownership with the adjacent. Um, I read the submitted ownership chart, which I found very clear. So I was okay with that. And as for the minimum variance at a fourteen-foot wide home, that is the smallest home on this social block of nineteen homes with building widths ranging from fifteen feet to thirty feet. So I feel this is a modest project, and I am ready to support it.
And so that's how you make five findings. Thank you so very much. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Sean, Vice Chair Shonda to go through
I think, I think it's, oh, okay.
No, no, because we didn't do it right the first time. I can't just say, it's so cute, I love it, right? We don't do, I love it. Vice Chair Shonda.
So um, let me go through it. Uh, the applicant means uh, finding A, which is with regards to uni, uniqueness. The site is narrow, and as the uniqueness study has indicated, um, it, it is one of the few uh, remaining vacant sites that are um, that are located in the area. And the site meets the uniqueness from that point of view. Uh, financing, it's not applicable, given the size of the site. Uh, it's a less than three-family home site. Uh, with regards to uh, neighborhood context, the applicant has done a very thorough analysis of the, uh, uh, side yard study and I think uh, home, um, home width study to show how the proposed building uh, would be in context of the surrounding uh, buildings. Uh, the, not just on the block front, but in the neighborhood. Um, so the, from my point of view, it meets that. It meets the neighborhood character study. Uh, with regards to finding number D, uh, finding D, I, as I stated earlier, the the title search and all of that indicates that the site was owned separately and individually, um, pre nineteen sixty-one, December thirteenth. And therefore, uh, it meets the, uh, finding uh, D. With regards to finding E, um, consistent with the neighborhood character, I think the ask is minimal. There's only asking for a side yard waiver and the building footprint. We generally see something a little bit bigger than that, but I think fifteen feet is, it seems doable in this case. And um, and therefore, just a side yard waiver for to facilitate a development on this narrow side seems reasonable, and it meets all those five findings.
Great, good job. Okay, now Commissioner Shabeta, let's do that.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I find that this satisfies the findings. Uh, it's unique as it's shown in the uniqueness study. This is a narrow lot. There's only uh, three slots that are similar to it in the relevant radius. Um, we don't have to go too big, it's a single family. The C, the character, this, this building typology is consistent with the remainder of the block, and it's not an eyesore nuisance of the neighborhood. I'm also satisfied that it meets D as this is um, um, this is not self-created. These lots were not owned in common ownership, and I believe that the applicant submitted uh, substantial evidence of same. And E, uh, this is a very modest ask. Um, they, they could have, uh, we've had many other projects where uh um, we were, they would ask for far more than uh, what, what was asked for here, and I think it's well in line with the hardship they've shown.
Okay, good. Thank you, everyone. Um, Jelly, you have your hand up.
Hi, um, I just want to let the board know that um, the fire department, John Daly um, did just send in um, an objection letter for this um, application. Um, the, I, I'm, I can read the letter. It's due to the substandard road width. Um, and that it should be sprinkled, but I'll, I'll read, the prop, projects should be sprinkled. Uh, the fire department of the city of New York is in receipt of the above noted application objects to this application due to the existing substandard road width as described in fire code section five oh three point two point ten. Buildings on fire apparatus access road that have an unobstructed roadway width of less than thirty-four feet shall be protected throughout by a sprinkler system. So that's what the letter states. It was just received by BSA.
Okay, so the only thing wrong with the application is the absence of a sprinkler system. That cures the problem. Yeah, I see. Um, G Daly nodding in agreement. And this tiny little picture that I can see from my screen on his desk. Yes, he's nodding in agreement bigger. He came closer to the screen, to the camera. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on.
Yeah, I would just like the applicant to add one note, uh, in the cellar or uh, on, on the cellar plan to state that this, uh, it wouldn't be used for sleeping or habit, um, purposes.
Not for living purposes.
Yeah.
Purposes, no sleeping. Okay. Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's um, that should be the final for twenty twenty-one fifty-two BZ, so that's the last case.
Yes, so let's take a ten-minute, ten-minute break and come back at noon, okay? Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
When are we coming back?
At, at twelve.
Oh, okay.
May bank? Okay. If everyone could come back, please.
Ready? Oh, we're not on yet. Oh. Yeah. Um, no, we're still recording paused. Okay. Good afternoon. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. First case up is SOC cases, new items twenty-five, item number twenty-five, one seventy-one ninety-seven BZ, sixty-five oh one, Cassina Boulevard, Queens.
Okay. Who's this?
Sandy, you should be saying.
Yeah. There we go. She just let in. I tried to, here we go. Sorry. I see. You need to accept being a panelist to be visible on video. Can you hear us?
Yes. Yes. I'll just start my video.
There you go. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Sandy. Your right hand?
Sandy Anagostu, representing the applicant.
Uh, do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
State your name for the record and proceed.
Sandy Anagostu, representing the applicant, and I'm joined by, um, the property owner, Mr. Rocco Sacco.
Yes.
Um, yeah. Could you unmute yourself, Mr. Sacco?
Can you hear us, please, Mr.? Yeah, there we go.
Yes, I do hear you.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Anagostu. Sorry.
So I, I noted the board's comments at the previous review session this morning. And, um, regarding the trash enclosure, which is located on the sixty-fifth avenue, uh, building frontage. Our plan shows it within the property line. Um, however, my office will go out to the field and verify the don't, the dimensions to see to what extent if any, how much it extends into the sidewalk and if it's, uh, complying with the plan. Um, also, there should be a gate there. It's not clear from the pictures, but there should be a gate which is closed and is only open during pickup times. And the lid of the actual, uh, steel container is only lifted when the trash is collected, which is, uh, fi- four to five times per week. So almost every day. Um, and that trash enclosure is exclusively, I believe, used by the eating and drinking establishment. So they obviously want to maintain it clean because it's a health issue. They, they're serving food. They want to make sure that it's clean. I spoke with the owner after the review session about possibly relocating it into the loading area. But that's not really an option because that loading area is used, maybe not daily, but it is used for deliveries. Um, and there's also one parking spot there that's used sometimes, but that is an active loading area. So we would just make sure that, first of all, that it complies with the correct dimensions, that it's not exceed, but exceeding and extending too far into the sidewalk. And just make sure it's kept clean and, and, and properly enclosed on all sides.
So, um, can we have a little bit more of a discussion about this because, and I see someone's hand up, um, in the waiting room. Is, is Laura Spalter, um, a part of your team?
She's part of. Not that I know of. Maybe she's the neighbor.
That might be a neighbor. Okay. So I, we, I see your hand up, Miss Spalter. We'll let you in when there's public testimony. Um, assuming it's public testimony about sixty-five dash oh one Cassina Boulevard, which is what we're talking about right now. Okay. Um, but just to talk a little bit more about this trash thing. These are dumpsters being, uh, being stored right there on the sidewalk, not well concealed. Um, I have a lot of, you know me, I have a ton of trouble, trouble with the subject of dumpsters in, in general. And most of the time it's on, um, on automotive facilities which own a big part. They, they have their dumpster fully on their lots. And it's, uh, and it's still a problem and they're not usually big eating and drinking places. But then, of course, we have the problem with dumpsters for, you know, eating and drinking, drive-through places and things like that. In this case though, because it's a small restaurant, I'm really concerned that all, everything that's in the dumpster is food remains. And, and even if the top is closed, which, you know, whatever, it's hard to know. Rats are very clever little things and they can get in to the dumpsters. You often see as you're walking down the street, unfortunately, the rats running around and coming out of the dumpsters where the tops are closed. So, um, part of the concern is that there's no trash management on site, inside by the restaurant. And one of the things that I've been looking at a lot is this idea of having, um, trash compacters that are very small things. They're like the size of a refrigerator. And the eating and drinking compacts their trash. And then it's kept in really good bags that are harder to break open. So if you have regular trash pickup and the trash is in a compactor, you know, has been compacted, there's less nasty stuff, right? And so, um, big apartment buildings use those compacters that are much bigger than a refrigerator. And you'll see the difference in the quality of how the trash is stored on the street. Um, I'm wondering if you could take a look at something like that. It's essentially, we've talked about these little refrigerated trash storage areas, which they also don't have, right? Um, for this use. Uh, those things are really small. Um, and they, and actually, if I remember, Jay Goldstein found a refrigerated trash of storage thing that's also a compactor. And it's like the size of a, of actually even a, a refrigerator, you might even put underneath a counter. So that could be a real great way of reducing the amount of trash that sits, however long that is, in the middle of July to be picked up. I'm just like, think of the worst thing you can think of about trash and this would be it.
Um, yeah, Madam Chair, definitely a great suggestions. We will look into it. And I would like to add that there is an area in the cellar, uh, where trash is stored, until it's put into the containers for pickup. And the trash is usually picked up in the morning. So, uh, but we will look into a compactor and, and refrigerated, uh, compactor combination.
Okay. So, you know, maybe a little more, I mean, because according to that, you shouldn't need such a large outdoor trash storage area. This area is large enough, it looks like, for three very large compact, um, uh, dumpsters, you know, those green rolling. This isn't like trash cans. These are dumpsters on wheels, right? That we typically see associated with the automotive facilities, the restaurants. You don't typically see that on a, on a standard city street. Those are normally garbage cans, right?
But if, if you look at the previously approved plan, which I'm looking at, it actually shows three.
Right. But there, for one, there are three skinny little things. I don't even know what they are, right? They're, they're adorable. Like, go find one of those. Those things are, and I don't believe those things are dumpsters. Um, that was more of a, I don't know, poetic, poetic version of a thing to put trash in.
Okay.
Okay. So, so, you know, what might be helpful, since I know I can count on you to do a study, um, is to take a look at the sort of the week's worth of how the trash is managed. Um, or have your client do that if the client is on site. Um, and just to see like, what is there, there that they need dumpsters as opposed to small trash cans into which, right before pickup, they're putting the trash that they're storing downstairs.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. Cause I'm getting the feeling that what they're doing is they're maybe putting trash downstairs in the cellar or maybe not. Because if you're looking at the connection from the kitchen, it's right out the door to the dumpster. So if I were. So if I were working in the kitchen, I would not be bringing it into the cellar, I would be putting it right into the dumpster.
Okay.
Which is a problem, okay, great.
So we'll document the operation in terms of the trash. Then regarding the roll-down gate, it's actually galvanized metal, and it will be cleaned up. But the owner is not sure about painting it because
Yeah, I get that.
doesn't really take paint well, but he will clean it. And also clean the wires that are hanging down the building, he'll remove those. There is an exit door adjacent to the roll-down gate that swings out, that's a fire exit door. Also, our plans are actually mislabeled. Okay, so the cellar floor plan is mislabeled as trade school. The trade school is only located on the second floor. The first, the cellar floor is actually occupied as a daycare center and a food preparation area for the eating and drinking establishment, and two retail stores on the Cassina Boulevard frontage.
Okay. So maybe while you're at that plan, you could explain what we discussed pretty long, about what's going on in that front area, like, how does the daycare, how's that work? The daycare elevator access, et cetera, how's that work?
If you permit me to share my screen.
Sure.
So can you see this?
Yes.
Okay, so, in actuality, on the Cassina Boulevard frontage, the way it's shown on the most recently approved plan from 2004, letter of substantial compliance, there is no wall, and there never was a wall between this elevator, stairway, access area, and the retail store. There never was a wall there, that's the footing. So in our proposed plan, we're not showing that wall, it never existed.
Okay.
So in terms of the square footage, 421 square feet, which is noted, that's the same square footage that's noted on our existing proposed plan. We haven't enlarged the area, but we will verify that square footage in the field and revise the plan if needed. But nothing was enlarged.
Okay.
So in terms of how the site is accessed, if you look at the photos, or even from here, you could see there are stairs along the front of the building. And then you would go up those steps and into the lobby, first floor, or take the stair down, or the elevator down. The daycare center actually has, at the back rear part of the building, has a stair, which is here in the back, has a stair going down. And they have three classrooms, classrooms seven, eight, and nine in the cellar level, and then classrooms on the first floor as well. So they have direct access from the first floor down to the cellar level. They wouldn't be going through the retail store, I'm sorry.
But if you needed the elevator, what do you do?
Well, then you would have to enter from the front. So if a student required the use of an elevator, they would go through the lobby, take the elevator, go down, and then go through that retail store area and through that door.
Okay.
That would be the only time. So there are two means of egress here, and it is code compliant. This was approved by the building department more than 20 years ago, and nothing has changed. Well, other than the changes that were documented in the 2004 letter of substantial compliance, there were no other changes or enlargements. So it does comply with
So this is your approved plan, your LSC-approved plan. Can you take a look at the new, the proposed plan? Because it's actually showing a different egress route.
Sure, I have it here.
The cellar level.
Yes, let's see, that's here.
There you go. So you see the, the egress is shown, kind of hidden with your blue boxes, but egress is shown going to the back stair. You see, you've got your fire egress lights that show that you should be going to the back stair. And then this existing room eight actually doesn't, doesn't actually show which way. There's no egress sign, it doesn't mean there isn't one, it's just no sign in that room shown. Know what I mean?
Right.
So that, and I guess one of the reasons, the reason that this came up is because you can't exit through a legal exit through an occupied space, right? So you've got your retail store downstairs, and just for argument's sake, it's filled with boxes. So you wouldn't be allowed to egress through a storage room. So that's why I was assuming you don't need to egress. Plus, you don't have as many rooms anymore, you don't have seven, eight, and nine, you just have seven and eight downstairs.
Right, that, eight and nine were combined, I think, it's just one larger room, there are no separate, no separate rooms.
I'm thinking you don't need a second means egress because your total occupancy is small. But you might need it because it's daycare, they might have a different law, I don't, I actually don't know.
I believe you only require one, but we have more than one way out of the building and is compliant with fire and building code.
Okay.
Myself, right?
Then, in terms of the parking, so there was, under the previous grant, the parking was actually waived. So the parking that's shown here is not required parking. But I believe the board at the time wanted to include some sort of parking. If you go by the zoning, 21 parking spaces are actually permitted here. But there's no way that you could accommodate that many spaces on the site, nor would you expect that many cars in this area, which is well-served by mass transit. So they did include three parking spaces, two in the front and one in the loading area. In my discussion with the property owner, there were actually two curb cuts here on Cassina Boulevard from the time that this site was occupied by a gas station. There used to be a gas station here, and there were two curb cuts. However, the DOT required him, at some point, I don't know exactly when, to remove one of those curb cuts. And he could only, he could only keep the one. So these two spaces in the front, from time to time, you may have one car parked here. There usually not two cars here, and maybe one in the loading area. But there were two curb cuts. And I was in agreement with Commissioner Ollie Brown, her suggestion. But then, in discussion with the owner, there were actually two curb cuts, and one had to be removed, the DOT required him to remove that. So trying to reinstall, I don't think they would permit us to do that.
It's probably because it's within 50 feet of a corner.
Right, you have to have a certain distance, and you don't have, I don't believe you have the depth, the 18 feet to do that. So it's very tricky here to maneuver cars, and you have the bus stop further down, and you have children. So I think the board was trying to have some kind of parking here, and that's why we put in these three spaces. But in practicality and in reality, they're not really always used. At least maybe one car, one or two are used, but not the three that you'd require two curb cuts in the front.
So would you object, then, to, I mean, there's, Vice Chair Shonda actually apparently saw, or was it Commissioner Ollie Brown, actually saw someone driving across the sidewalk? So, yes, Vice Chair, go ahead.
I did not see it, but I did see a car parked there. And, but what I was trying to figure out, how would that car back out without it affecting the flow of traffic and pedestrian flow?
I think the question, maybe Mr. Sacco wants to respond, I see him.
Yes, yes, you can ask open the question. I was there since 1979, I was the guy that put the pizzeria there.
Oh, okay, oh, it's your pizzeria?
Whatever question, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I'm familiar, you know, you have to understand, across from this building is Queens College. And I can elaborate on the fence and the sidewalk as well, if you want me to.
Yeah, I mean, sure, to the extent that we need answers, please answer, I mean.
I could explain the why as I could explain the whole thing. And start with the parking. All right, so whatever was approved, was approved. And just like Sandy has explained, it's not that practical to have three parking spaces there. And I think about 10, 15 years ago, we were told by DOT to remove one, one of those curb cuts, and we did. As far as parking, you might have one car at times, not all the time. Usually, we like to keep the driveway clear, just in case, like, you know, some parents who wants quickly unload one of the kids. And that's the way it's been operating for the last 20 years. Ivy Nursing School has been there since the very beginning. So, like I say, the law is the law, the plans are the plans, but sometimes, there will flow as well when you put them to practice.
So what I, what I'd like to understand, because I'm not, I don't see really the need for parking here if it was waived by the board. There might be other attitudes to this. I'm more concerned about the impact of the car on the sidewalk.
All right, so, that car on the sidewalk, it's very close to the curb. So it pulls in and backs out, that's, you know, it's, we are talking about few feet. It's not like that he's driving across the sidewalk from one end to the other. That curb and that spot, we are talking about, I don't know, 10 feet. So if he pulls in, it backs out. And that's the way it's been working for the last 20 years. We never had any problem with it. But that car is, that's ones on the blue moon, it's not always there.
So I guess my question is, it sounds, based on the photos and your description, that only one of the parking spots ever gets used, and the other one doesn't get used.
A hundred percent.
So would you mind if we took away, I mean, I don't know what it does to your lease, or anything like that. Would you mind if we took away the front parking for one of them?
Yes, absolutely, no problem.
That would be no problem.
It was never used, and my leases, none of the tenants have any parking spaces. Only calls for one parking, I think one of the leases has one parking. And no one else has any, anything stipulating the leases that they have parking, no one.
Okay, okay, good. And so the parking that's in that loading dock, who uses that spot?
That spot is for the nursing school, for the kids there. That gate, you know, I know that's like, they brought up some, before they say something about the width of that gate. That gate is nine feet wide. So a car goes in and out, no problem.
So, but, but it's used by, it's actually used sometimes for parking, that loading area?
Yes, sometimes.
What in the upper corner?
Yeah, sometimes they leave a car there.
Okay, so, so you would be okay with us relying on the one curb cut on Cassina? That's Cassina, right? That, that goes right onto the sidewalk and eliminating the second parking space from there? So that you don't
Absolutely, absolutely, it's not a problem, no.
Great, okay, that makes it a lot easier for everybody, right?
Madam Chair.
If you want me to explain the fans and the whys, I could do that, too.
Yeah, just one second, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I would be okay with eliminating, but I would just want to make sure Mr. Sacco does go through the lease documents that were submitted to us. Because in that, the lease with Ivy Daily's, page 13, item number, I think it's the 71st, does speak to the parking, all the parking spaces directly in front of the premise will be exclusively used by the tenants during normal school hours, except for one parking space shall be reserved for the second-floor tenant. So please just make sure, whatever you're agreeing to is not going to be in conflict with the lease, that's all.
Okay, not a problem.
Okay, well, because you'd need to look at the other tenant's lease, maybe they don't have a deal.
They don't have, we checked, they don't have.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. So.
So, wait, no, so Mr. Rocco was going to explain, Sacco, sorry. The why, going to explain about the fence, right? Yeah.
Let me clarify about the fence. Originally, we had three rule containers on the sidewalk there, I know, like, next to the building. And because of the college, you know, when you see a container, you always get tempted to throw a cup, a paper, and the area was always in a mess. So to accommodate the neighbors and the college, we put a fence there. And it's kept it pretty, pretty clean, and we never had a complaint, not that I can remember. Do you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, I'm thinking about
I don't see, I don't hear, we never had a complaint. I mean, I operated that business over 25 years, and I never had a complaint. And like, we don't want any, anything to happen there because we serve food and drinks. So if it's messy outside, nobody will come inside. And the way that we operate with the garbage, everything is in a heavy-duty bags. It's not like that we have loose garbage in those containers. Those bags are pretty heavy, and when we put them in the containers, they seal. So some of the friendly, whatever you want to call them, mice and roaches, they're going to have a hard time penetrating into those bags.
Trust me, the mice don't have any trouble at all. They push flat like paper in order to get in.
I understand, but we routinely wash that area, okay? And like I said, we get the garbage picked up pretty often, so that we don't have that problem. I'm not saying that there is nothing there, you know, like you say, something can always happen. But we are on top of it, because we serve food. So, you know, if they see mice outside, they're not going to come inside.
So can I ask you, though, from the pizza establishment, do you bring the trash downstairs into the cellar? Or it goes right out to the street?
Let me tell you how it works. We have garbage containers downstairs in the prep area and upstairs, all right? So when those garbage containers have full, three-quarters full, we seal the bags, okay? And we put them in the container. That's, everybody's doing that. Anybody that tells you different, they're probably lying, but that's the way it's done. We seal the bags and we put them in the containers, that's done.
Yeah, so that's the thing. So would you object, I mean, I know that Ms. Anagnostu will research this. Would you object to getting a trash compactor so that we can get the trash to be more limited in size, so that it's not?
But the trash compactor, I don't know if you're familiar with it, they're not that small. You know, if we are complaining about like, the, you know, the size of those containers, the compacters are even bigger. You know, it's, I don't know, I never seen like, you know, I let you get one of those homey things. Like, I don't know if it'll work for the restaurant. It's very hard because they're pretty sizable, those things.
Well, not to put it out on the street, I know which ones you're talking about. We saw that once with a very gigantic boarding school, it was the size of a truck, right?
No, no, but they have, they have smaller ones. But inside, as far as I know, they mainly do paper compactor. You have to understand that most of us, you know, of our food and stuff, you start squeezing the stuff, then you have another problem. Then you have another problem with the, you know, juices and what were you squeezing on? So, you know, we could look into it, but I don't know if it's that practical. I mean, I know a lot of, I have a lot of friends in the restaurant business. I never saw one, but if you want us to look into it, we will.
Okay, it's a bold new world, lots of new technology. Let's see what we invented in the last five years.
Let's let's see, let's see if there's one out there.
Okay.
We'll definitely poke into it.
As far as the wires are concerned. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, those are telephone wires. As a matter of fact, I just took a picture of that. Those are telephone wire, they're not they look a little sloppy. I have to call Verizon to tie them up, but um, basically, that's what I see here. They're right above the garbage area there. And um, you know, I, you know, I I just took a picture then. And I could see what you've seen it and it looks a little, I don't know if you see them here, like I have a, you know, see in a.
No, I I don't, but we have photographs, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, but those are nothing but the telephone Verizon, they're a little bit sloppy. I gotta call them up to tie them up a little bit. But they look a little, they come off the pole and they're a little trendy all over the place.
Yeah, they could be like bundled together and pinned to the wall.
I I will, I will make the call. It's not something we could do, but we have to call them and let them see if they could bundle them.
They never care what stuff looks like when they do their installation.
As long the phone works, that's what they care.
Right?
But we're pretty tangential operators, like, you know, we old fashioned southern Italian people, we always on top of things, like, you know, we try not to be sloppy and to keep the neighbors and Queens College happy, so we could do nice business.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your testimony and your cooperation.
Thank you, Tony.
Go ahead, Miss Anagnostu, you wanna?
So, yes, um, regarding the street trees, um, I was told that at one time there were street trees there that were planted, but about three years ago or so, um, tho- they they were actually removed because they had been infected by the longhorn beetle and never replaced. The Parks Department never replaced them. So we'll inquire about when we can get new trees there and file if we have to. But we'll look into that um to replace those trees. Then um the compliance chart will be revised accordingly. And regarding.
Google Street Photos for?
Yes, we'll we'll provide Google Street Photos to further support um the continuous use as per Commissioner Altley Brown's suggestion. And so regarding the second floor trade school, and Mr. Sacco again can elaborate on this, but it's currently not occupied. They actually stopped having classes there um after the beginning of the pandemic uh in March of twenty twenty. I'm not sure exactly when, but I believe their classes are like remotely now uh as are a lot of schools in New York City, uh including Queens College, which is directly across from here. The campus is closed and so this school was working with students from the college um and it's been there for the past twenty years. So I um I understand that there is an active lease until um, what was that date? December of well, their lease has not expired. So Mr. Sacco is hoping that they'll start up again. But he does, i- in case they don't decide not to come back and hold in-person classes. He does have other uh trade schools similar to this that are interested in leasing the space. And that's why we need to get a certificate of occupancy, because any school that would be moving in there would need to show this document because they need to be licensed and they need we really need to get that um. So if you would like to elaborate, uh Rocco, about the trade school.
Well, you 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 pretty much said the exactly what's happening over there. Um, they are remote and I believe when they come back, but I I put a little sign outside and I got a few inquiries in event that they change their mind. I have other people lined up that want the space, but
Okay.
Couple of them have questioned that we have to have the CO renewed, because if they do want to do little changes, a little alteration, then they cannot go to the Building Department to make those changes unless they have a, you know, a current.
So here here's a suggestion, because I don't want you to have to come back to the board. If it turns out to be, say, um, I don't know, a lawyer's office that wants to rent up there, that's not Use Group Nine, that's Use Group Six. Right? I'm wondering if we could um suggest that we have either Use Group Nine or Use Group Six on the upper floor. This is a question to to commissioners. That way, they wouldn't have to come back and they they'd have their, the resolution would say both.
We have to be careful. I would be okay with office. It's just the any vehicular traffic that could be added with medical or office spaces.
Well, medical is Use Group Four uh four, three, which is as of right in an R four.
That is true, yeah. Okay, alright. But with the office, uh, yeah, I think it would be similar to daycare on the trade.
Yeah.
And it is well accessed, um.
And I mean, I, you know, frankly, I I don't even think it makes any difference if it's the second floor of the restaurant. Right? Does it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's obviously a commercial character building, right? And it used to be a gas station here, right?
And you have the Queens College right across the street, so it um and and the park right next to it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I would be okay with that.
So actually, the lease for the school is uh, they have an active lease till December of twenty twenty nine. But um, I think that's a great suggestion, uh Madam Chair, because Mr. Sacco has been understanding, he's given them a break with the with the rent and waived some rent, hoping they'll come back or he's attracted other interested parties for a school, but to have that option with the Use Group Six I think would be something very good um after trying to recover from this past two years.
Okay, so if that's okay with you and the other commissioners, um, then that's, then the resolution would read Use Group Nine or Use Group Six and we can say Use Group Nine Trade School, because that's pretty specific um versus Use Group Six. Um, you know, I think maybe the difference would be like a Use Group Nine might also be, I think that's where you have um, a ballroom banquet facility. That wouldn't be okay. That's very heavy traffic oriented and so on. That's why Use Group Nine Trade School, but really any Use Group Six would be okay, seems to me. Okay, um, Vice Chair, do you have your hand up still?
Yeah, I actually forgot to bring this up, um, and it has to do with signage. Um, the app, a total of two hundred and fifty-three square foot of signage is proposed along Casino. Um, and I went through the previous resolutions, um, and the resolutions and the drawings were silent about permitting um two hundred and fifty-three square foot of signage. So if the applicant could clarify it, how it was permitted, or was it to be an as of right, uh like we typically see, hundred and fifty square foot for frontage? That would be helpful.
Yeah, we'll look into the signage calculations. Um, I know we showed them on our drawings, but we'll, we'll compare it to what was approved and.
Okay, but don't forget, it's per establishment for retail, right? It's, there's a maximum for retail per establishment, not for total frontage. If you look at the regulations.
That's the question I had. Is this being treated as each establishment getting its own sign of each one fifty square foot maximum? That's how you're, we are to look at it?
The the regulations for, if you were to treat this as a C one, it's an R four, right? So if we treat it as a C one, the maximum is whatever the maximum area is per establishment. So you have a daycare center, you have a pizza restaurant, you have a trade school. Each one of them is allowed to have the per establishment maximum.
That would be, that's a lot of signage.
It's potentially a lot of signage, but that's actually how the signage regulations work, because the idea, if you just think about it, pizza restaurant comes in first, grabs the whole thing, no one else gets any signage. Then they have a non-viable business, right? So the, so the signage regulations are such to um allow for each establishment to advertise their their use.
Okay, so if we were to do that, I think then maybe we put some amount of limit so that not each one of them ends up being one fifty, one fifty, one fifty at nauseam and maybe what, maybe the applicant come up with some number where the total will be something in the range of no more than three hundred square foot or something like that, or two fifty square foot?
Well, we could limit per establishment as opposed to a total, because it's the same issue. If all, if one establishment grabs all three hundred, the other two don't get signs. So you could say maximum of whatever, whatever, whatever per establishment.
Okay, um, should it be then each one fifty? I think that's a little too much.
Each one a hundred fifty or one fifty? What did you say?
Each, for each establishment, would it be one hundred and fifty square foot?
I don't know. So why don't we, what's the actual situation? We don't even know what the actual situation is. Maybe it's not a right? I mean, we never did this before, as far as I know.
Yeah.
That we had to limit each one. I I'm not, normally, we just fall on the C one regulations and let let it play, right? Uh, I'm just looking at what the C one regulations are right now for size.
Yeah, I mean, unless DOT approved it and it's based on some underlying condition, that also would be helpful to know.
Total surface area, no, total non-illuminated signs. Non-illuminated signs, C one, three times the street frontage of the zoning lot, but no more than a hundred square feet for interior through lots. Um, and then where does it say about, how do you do this? Where does it say each establishment again? Maybe that's one about measurement?
Yeah.
Surface area, maybe it's that in.
Yeah, C one is one fifty.
No, but there's a thing that talks about per establishment. Now I've lost that, permitted signs. Permitted.
Should, it says, surface area not exceeding the limited to establishment for non-illuminated signs, total surface area in all districts as indicated, total surface area of all permitted signs including non-illuminated or illuminated shall not exceed the limitation. Uh, nope, nope, no, no, not that, sorry.
Okay, I don't want to spend.
I did see it somewhere. Yeah, I did see it somewhere. I it's just.
I don't want to spend a lot of time looking this up, but it used to be a per establishment rule, because I did a lot of signs for people based on establishments. Um, but I don't want to spend a lot of, lot more time. Uh, yeah, so let's, let's look at this offline and Miss Anagnostu can do the same.
Yes.
Rule is, okay.
We did submit a signage analysis in our October um submission in response to notice of comments and we do show all the signs with dimensions and signage calculations. But we'll, we'll clarify that. Um, and we did use a C one as the equivalent, closest zoning district, C one three. Um, and this is also a corner lot, so you have two frontages. Although the only sign on sixty-fifth Avenue is the uh for the eating and drinking establishment. The other tenants have signs on Casino, so that is in our plans, but we'll, we'll clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on. I don't want to spend too much more time on this part. Okay, go ahead. Is there anything else?
I think I I covered everything, but.
Okay, so then let's go to the public. I, there are two people with their hands up. Um, just to remind um those people with their hands up, we're speaking now and 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 we're going to make a display, but there's two people already with their hands up. We're speaking about sixty-five dash oh one Casena Boulevard in Queens, which is calendar number one seventy-one ninety-seven BZ. So if you raised your hand, it's only to speak about this application. Um, and we'll speak about the others when we get to them, okay? So go ahead, Tony.
So the call in numbers, which you wish to speak is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You will then be prompted to put in a caller ID number, which is, please ignore, and press pound. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, let's start again.
Sorry, you call in six four six five five eight eight six five six, enter the webinar ID number, which is uh nine nine one six six seven zero three two three zero. You will be prompted to.
Then you press.
Then you press. Pound, sorry, press pound. I apologize. It's one of those days. Uh, press pound. You will then be prompted for a participant's ID, which is to be ignored. You will press pound again. And uh once you're in, you press nine to star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
Okay, so thank you. Okay, so we have Laura Spalter, I'm allowing her to.
I thought Jella said she was for Terrace View.
I'm sorry, I'm for Terrace View.
Uh, okay, so please put your hand down until we get.
I didn't know, I didn't know my hand was up.
Oh, okay.
Says lower hand. I'm so sorry.
That's all right. No, no, we're all learning new technology.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, how do we do this? Move, just talking. Okay. So while we wait to see if anyone calls in on this, um, let's, uh, how much time do you need to submit the responses?
Uh, I would say a month.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating, um, Mr. Sacco. It's always helpful.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, go, move on?
Yes.
Okay, appeals calendar, continued hearing items, item number twenty-six, twenty seventeen, four dash eight, three, three, nine, three, three, nine, Victory Boulevard, Staten Island.
Okay, it's gonna be a lease folder. She's in.
Hi. Hi, I don't have the ability to do the video.
Okay, anyone with you?
Okay, there you go. Hi.
We don't have to be sworn in, Elise, go ahead.
I'm not alone.
Yeah, but you don't have to be sworn in. It's an A case.
Don't, oh, we don't have to be sworn in, is what you're.
Right, it's an A case, you don't have to be sworn in.
I should have with us, um, Mr. Willie Ewan and Levon Lu Fu. I see him here. I see Levon.
Willie Ewan.
Um, and I see Willie Ewan, okay. Uh, Mr. Ewan is the architect and Levon is the owner. Okay. Okay, so I guess we'll get ready to it. We heard your comments, thank you. Um, first, we've been going back and forth with the plan examiner for a very long time and that's been the holdup. So until we finish that process, it's, we need to get permits and that's what's it's hard to know when that process will end, so we can actually give you a definitive timeline. So that's been a a difficult process for us.
So I guess my question, thank you for that. My question is, when did you begin to file for demo permits? Um.
And I don't think we have yet, but we can do that.
So that's my, my concern is that nothing's happening and we have a terrible site. That's a terrible blight on the neighborhood. So if the timeline says we're not gonna get this started for years, that's not an okay answer, right?
But this, this owner can speak to it, but he really is trying to get this started. They've been going back and forth with the plan examiner. It's not like they're just sitting on this.
Right, but what, so let's hear from whoever's doing the back and forth thing with the plan examiner, so I can understand what's been going on. Who's that? Mr. Mutu or?
Willie Ewan.
Un- unmute yourself, please.
Yes, hello. Hello.
Yes. Hi.
Okay, hello. Uh, this is Willie Ewan. I'm the uh, architect for the project. Since the pandemic, everything has been uh, slow paced with the building department. It took the examiner after somebody called, calling the uh, chief engineer, even getting to the commissioner after about eight months. Finally, you've responded. So he responded at the beginning of the year and he wrote the comments and some objection. So we're trying to tackle that with him. Hopefully, I will be smooth sailing from here on. And I have advice to the owner also to uh, file the demo since we got the response from the plan examiner. At uh, some point, we we have to, you know, move on. So I advise him to uh, go ahead with the demolition application. Um, and at the same time, we're uh, working on with the building department to get this plan approved. Everything has been submitted, the structural plan, architectural plan, the plumbing. So everything has been submitted. So we just have to sit down and point to the plan examiner where he can find uh, those comment that he wants to see. So that's the.
Okay.
Where we are at this point.
Can we slow down a second? My main concern is how terrible the site is and um, that the building has to be demolished. So let's do a timeline on that. You still haven't submitted the demo uh, application, right?
Mm hmm, right.
So let's do a timeline on submission of the demo application, doing all of the work, the pre pre permitting work that's done for demo, like you need to exterminate the site. There's a number of things that have to be done like that, right? You have to do asbestos, ACP fives and so on. Can you go through how long to accomplish that? So at least we get this building removed and the site clean.
I already spoke to the owner uh, this morning and we're uh, going ahead. He has to find a demolition company and they have their own uh, pe- people expediter who will be doing it. So we'll we'll update the board on uh, when that will happen.
No, 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 no. So wait a second. I'm a little confused. So normally. So in other words, there's we don't have any movement until there's a demo contractor found. Like, when's a demo contractor going to be found? I I need deadlines on this. I can't have this whenever we get around to finding a demo contractor. This is a dangerous blighted site. It's a danger to the neighborhood. I'm not speaking to the architect. I'm speaking to the owner about this, Mr. Mutu. You have a dangerous blighted site. The building has to come down now. Otherwise, I call HPD and I have them come in and then they charge you back. And that's not funny because they charge more than you want would want to pay for this. Okay?
I'm in, I don't think so. The building is in a bad situation. It's the solid uh, foundation and the wall and.
Sorry, do not respond like that. We have a site that looks terrible. That's a blight on the neighborhood. When you respond like that, you tell me you're not going to cooperate and you're going to push this back until three years from now and we still have a terrible looking site. We can't do this. The building has to be demolished now. You just told me you're not going to do it because you don't think it's a problem. It's a problem.
No, miss, I didn't say that. I I didn't say that I'm not going to do it. But what I'm saying that because I'm the building owner, I know about the building. So that's what I'm trying to.
He also recently repaired the fence, by the way. I didn't get a chance to say that, just saying.
It doesn't look like it. You took the razor wire off. Sorry.
Pictures that we got recently are are like recent ones.
Yeah, someone has a radio or something on. Could you turn that off, please? Someone has a radio on, please turn it off. Someone who's not muted.
Or maybe it's the YouTube video at the same time.
No, I don't think so. It's different words. Um, okay. I I I'm not hearing what I need to hear.
We can he can. We can give you a timeline to find a contractor. Maybe we can even show you on the next submission, a contractor and then a timeline to get a demolition, correct, Willie and Levon?
That's right.
All right, I'm not going to give you a lot of time. I'm putting you on for next month. There's no reason why it takes that long to find a demo contractor.
Okay.
Lots of people out there, right? By the by the next time you appear, I need a signed demo contract and um, the beginnings of the application for demolition approval. It's not going to be, we'll get to it when we get to it. Right? All right. All right, what else?
Um, I think that was the main issue, correct?
Yes, I guess. I don't know what else to say. Um, yeah, the uh, as Commissioner Sheta said, they provide, you just provided recent photos of what I described as the hideous eyesore. So I don't know how that's an improvement of a site. I mean, if you really wanted to not do this work, for example, you would have installed a really nice fence, you would have um, protect you, you would have made it into something where the neighbors who are walking by this every day, not to want mention the people who live or work next door are not looking at this abandoned wreck. And but but apparently that's not of, it's not enough of a concern for you, so we're going to have to make it our concern. Okay. Um, so all right, so I'm putting you on for a hearing next month, which I don't remember what our hearing schedule is.
Seventh or the um, twenty eighth, I believe.
Twenty eighth. Okay, I'm putting you on for the twenty eighth. And by the twenty eighth, I need a signed contract from a demo contractor and filed materials to get a demolition permit to remove the building. Okay, all that has to be in compliance with whatever the phase one said. Because you're obviously required to do a phase two, so you have to be careful not to uh, disturb anything that might involve that. Yeah, Ms. Follow Derek, go ahead.
Um, so does that mean that you expect us to submit all of that by February?
You can show up, you can.
Ninth or do we?
Show up with it, or let's say submit it on the Wednesday before the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so it's, what did we say, two twenty eight? Okay, let's see if there's anybody from the public on this one.
Okay, the call in number should you wish to discuss is twenty seventeen four A three thirty nine fifty fifty Boulevard. The call in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. The webinar ID number is nine nine one six six seven zero three two three zero pound. You will then receive a prompt to put in a participant ID number. Please ignore that and press pound. Uh, once you're in, you can press nine star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. If you're in the Zoom room already, praise your raise your Zoom hand.
Right, okay. Um, let's see if there's anything else. Piece of the wall, oh. And so we also uh, have, as you probably heard, we're instructing DOB to go out and inspect the site because we feel there's a wall that may be unsafe. And I know that.
It's the wall underneath the fence too.
It's not a, it's not like a building wall. It's the wall right underneath the fence.
Right, understood. Just to clarify, let's see if uh, yeah, Ted, just to clarify, I don't know if you've already put in that request, but it's the the wall that supports a fence as opposed to the wall of the building. However, when DOB inspects, they inspect, right?
Okay, noted, Chair. We'll definitely advise them of uh, the wall indicated.
Okay, thank you so much, Ted. Okay, um, all right, I think that's it. So then we can move on, okay? Please uh, follow our instructions. No excuses. I'm not going to allow an adjournment. So what we are, we're doing more than requesting, we're demanding that this work be done. It'd be different if the site were well maintained, but it's not. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is zoning calendar. Continued hearing items, item number twenty seven, twenty seventeen, two sixty two BZ, eighteen Stanwick Street, Brooklyn.
We got bar written. Who else? Case is this again?
This should be Todd's, shouldn't it?
Todd, okay, yeah, I don't know. He doesn't. He never raises his hand, so I have to.
Hi, good afternoon. Took a while for the panelist uh, option to appear.
Oh, okay. You're losing your voice.
Well, I'm trying to use the microphone because we had that problem with the.
It makes, yeah, it makes. Radio announce.
There you go. I'm trying to adapt. We'll make it work.
Forgot your hat.
I did forget the hat. Thank you. I'll remember for next time. Do we need to be sworn in?
Uh, that's it, just the two.
You.
And um, actually, the property owner may be here. I don't know if he is in. His name is Solomon Sandell. It's a phone number that ends with this four zero zero.
Yes.
If he's there, he's also here. He was attended the review session and just wanted to be available. I don't think there are any particular questions for him, but. It's.
Please unmute, Mr. Sandell.
Yeah, I'm on.
Raise your right hand. You affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on instead of board member questions. Please state your name and proceed, Mr. Dale.
Sure, it's Todd Dale, uh, on behalf of the property owner in this application. Just as a quick aside, I just wanted to help clarify something that was discussed on the Kissna Boulevard section. If you actually look at, it's section thirty two sixty four of the zoning resolution, the third paragraph talks about how when you have a zoning lot with multiple establishments, each establishment is treated its own zoning lot for sign purposes. So just to help you out.
Very much, that's so useful.
I think there's an equivalent one also for manufacturing too, but that's the the commercial district section.
Yeah, now I have to mark it otherwise.
We've done a lot of sign cases too, so.
Okay, good.
There you go. Okay, so onto the application at hand, uh, we did attend the review session and heard the comments of the board. And we'll uh, respond to the as we can now, and we can also follow up in submission. I would just note generally, Chair, as you noted about the rezoning for this site, part of the this application was pending for some time. Part of that is because we were aware of the Bushwick neighborhood plan that was proposed for the site that's been a little bit static. If any of the commissioners is interested, we actually submitted materials with that in the record of this application, if you're curious about it, but it's there. But you know, with that static, um, you know, we 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 did want to proceed with the particular application because there's no guarantees. Um, with something that, you know, uh, of that nature, but I just wanted to let you know that that information is in the record if you're curious.
Okay. Um, I just want to interject with that. Um, my understanding from staff's conversation with the Brooklyn office was that have for whatever reason that it stalled before, that reason seems not to exist anymore. So um, worth another phone call, like they're encouraging the phone call, let's just say, okay?
Okay, so noted. And and we've heard that. Um, with respect to the issues raised, primarily, they were plan related. We heard what was discussed. We'll uh, provide revised plans that as far as the 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 quicker items that will note the exterior materials, will clarify the mechanical rooms, will include the lot area and FAR in the drawings and clarify the construction floor area terminology. I would concur, it needs to be gross or zoning, but we'll make sure, okay? As far as some of the um, the the two other, uh, I would say more significant issues that were discussed. With respect to the rear yard, um, when this was originally designed, it was designed by the architect to comply with R six regulations because that was the closest residential district and it seemed appropriate. And I know there was discussion regarding the rear yard and the the waiver that's pursuant or the reduction that's allowed under section twenty three dash fifty two. Actually, what's more um, applicable to this is that section twenty three dash five forty two would apply to this lot, which says that if you have a lot that fronts on the short side of a block front um, for the block and it's less than two hundred and thirty feet, which is the case here, that no rear yard is required within a hundred feet of that front lot line. So if this weren't our sixth district and twenty three five forty two were applied, no lot line would be required.
No rear yard, no rear.
No rear yard would be quite correct. And twenty three five forty one might also apply. That's when you're within an intersection that's a hundred thirty five degrees, but that's a second section. But I would say we can clarify on our submission the that if this were in R six and and the design was done to R six, that twenty three five forty two would exempt. There would be no required rear yard. That said, um, you know, we did want to propose a a rear yard to be respectful of of other lots. But one other thing I would want to note, and again, we can submit this to the record. I'm not sure if it's, it was submitted historically because this case has been pending some time, but there's actually a restrictive declaration on record for lot ten, which is the lot that is immediately uh, to the east of this site, uh, the one that runs fronting on Melrose. And this restrictive declaration requires that lot to be maintained open for parking in order to satisfy certificate of occupancy requirements for the building on lot one, which is the one at the corner that was uh, subject to the board resolution that allowed residential use in a portion of that building. But we can submit that lot, that declaration, but currently, you know, this restrictive declaration um, would not allow for any structure to be built um, on the lot that would be at our rear yard. So that's a second level of of, you know, sort of the thought of the design here.
Que- a question about that is, are there conditions under which that restrictive deck would no longer hold?
I believe, you know, I I would need to dig into it more, but I think it's actually a a couple of levels. First, um, in order to remove that restrictive declaration, I believe that the the uses of the building would need to change. So they would need to change the certificate of occupancy, and I don't believe you could amend that certificate of occupancy without coming back to the board because there's the BSA grant that allowed the certificate of occupancy, you know, for for the uses because lot one is actually owned by the same property owner as lot five and lot ten. Um, if you have the land use study that we did, you can see that it's sort of a, it's the, it's lot one, lot five, which is immediately um, south of our site and then lot one, which fronts on Melrose. So it's sort of a, an Oklahoma shape. So that's why I could uh, describe the the collective, but um, lot lot ten and lot five are actually used for for parking of vehicles. Um, I do know that the restrictive declaration is specifically for lot ten. I do not know if there is one for lot five also, but lot ten does have that restrictive declaration. So with respect to the rear yard, we just wanted to to let.
Before you go there, because I'm trying to take this all the way through because we're trying to imagine some future time, right? I I haven't looked at the restrictive deck, obviously, because I don't even remember that it exists, but um, if let's just say lot one has to have this parking because the board required there to be parking and restricted parking to be provided on lot ten and five, is that right? Ten and five?
Lot five and lot ten are the same owner and they both currently have accessory parking. I don't know if five is a required portion. Ten has the restrictive declaration for sure.
Okay, so, but what would is very common is now you get a rezoning. This you know, because you've done this, right? Now you get a rezoning. And now you're like, well, but I want to build a residential building on these sites. And so they come to the BSA and they say, would you mind giving us letter of substantial compliance because we're still maintaining the parking? It's just going to be in the cellar now of this new building and we're going to build what's allowed in an R six A, which is what we understood was the new zoning consideration. So then my concern is you won't get the advantage of the open space behind you. That's that's my big concern, that the building that's going to be built under the R six A is going to mean that these apartments look at a fourteen foot rear yard, which is teeny weeny. That's what this is all about, so.
Understood. I just wanted to provide that information regarding the declaration. Regardless, let's say that that never um, the declaration didn't exist and that were built. I I would go back and reference that. If it were R six A that this section twenty three five four two would allow. the subject building to be built to the lot line because no rear yard would require because it's on the short block front. So so if the rezoning were to occur, a building larger than what is subject to this variance or what's proposed could be built and no rear yard would be required because it's fronting on the short block.
But not with no windows for a multiple dwelling?
I'm not sure as far as I'm just. The windows requirement, right, but but the the windows, again, I don't know if the windows could go to the side or the different designs and something like that. But from yard specific, I just wanted to to clarify that there was some thought given to the proposed yard. And that, you know, that was the thought behind the distance that was proposed.
Understood, but it so if this building had been built full to the lot line, I mean, I'd even say it's a very it's a deep question, but you know, it's a deep building in that case. But then what you're talking about is having a building that only relies on the windows at the front. And it's possible to lay this out so that only living rooms are located at the front and something called, you know, workspace or the kitchens, like that kind of stuff is located at the back. The staircase is located at the back. Then you could build full to the lot line, but the way you've got it now, you've got a front and back. And the little apartments at the back are relying entirely on this fourteen foot rear yard, which will eventually be socked in by other buildings. That's what that's what's going on here. So you know, if if the layout were changed, you could build, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I don't know about the others, you could build full to your lot line. Right? That gives you more floor area, blah, 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 right?
So I hear what you're saying. I wanted to provide that information. You know, to provide some context to the rear yard that's proposed. I mean, we could still review the rear yard and look at, you know, a changer, a possible increase, but I just wanted to confirm that, you know, per R six, it would be compliant. So I don't know if that changes the board's thoughts or discussion with respect to the the rear yard issue.
I can't speak for the others. For me, it has to do with light and air to the tenants who live there and what it's like to look out on a on a will ultimately become a cave. Right?
So. So now with respect to the front lot line, there was a discussion regarding the areaway and the front lot line and orienting it along the street line. Vice Chair Chad, you actually brought something up about an overhang. I have to say I missed that a little bit. It was a little choppy in my hearing and the discussion. Was it the overhang that was suggested over the front there over the areaway? Because one of the things I'd say is I had an opportunity to discuss with Mr. Sandell, the owner, and he actually liked the idea, Chair, that you brought up about retaining the areaway and actually amending the plans in the cellar to have a dedicated trash area inside the building and allowing that areaway to provide access there. But then also considering if the board would be open to a design where we consider having a overhang that would be even with the street line, but maintaining the areaway in order to provide a dedicated internal cellar. If that if that type of proposal is something that seems agreeable, you know, before we go down the road exploring that design change.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think what you latter latter said is what I was suggesting is have the areaway within the property line. And then the overhang would be above it, which would be which would be parallel to the street line.
No, not parallel to.
Would be sorry, would be on the street line, but above the.
Yeah, yeah. So that kind of gives you the both the best of both worlds.
And we think that's a great idea. Yeah. And we like the idea of the internal trash.
Yeah, and I think it also improves the design of the building, frankly.
Okay. So we will definitely explore that as far as revising the plans in addition to the some of the smaller changes we discussed. As far as the rear yard, you know, we'll provide the information about the rear yard. We'll we'll look at it. You know, as far as how it affects the design, but we just wanted to point out that what's currently proposed actually would be in excess if this were our sex.
Yeah, in excess, but you still would if this were our I just need to underscore. Not be allowed to have an apartment windows facing in a yard that doesn't that's not thirty feet actually under the multiple dwelling law, right? But because under a variance, so if you're doing it as of right, you'd have no choice. It would have to be a required yard of thirty feet. But with us, because a variance creates these yards, right? Multiple dwelling law doesn't apply in terms of yards. But my my inkling is you could handle seventeen feet worth of depth and not significantly impact the layouts of the units.
We'll definitely we'll definitely explore that. And actually, in consideration of the additional area that would be at the front, that's a balance to perhaps something that could happen.
Yeah.
In their rear. So I just want those those two issues seem to be the primary design concerns, and we think that they're excellent points were raised and we'll review both.
Okay, great.
And then beyond the plans, the the last issue was regarding the seeker submission. We'll confirm with board staff as far as because I know that this has gone through a couple of consultants. We'll confirm. We'll adjust our submission based on the revised and proposed plans and get that into the board as quickly as we can.
All right. Any other comments, questions from anybody, anybody? Okay, let's go to the public.
Well, before you do, Chair. Since that's okay, I'll lower the hand. Since we're talking a revision in design, which then impacts costs, et cetera. If I can get a little more direction, you know, on this one, we because we went back to the two thousand and eighteen to the report. And I was able to actually in doing the comparison, which is all laid out in the appendix with the Marshall and Swift. And I was lucky enough to have a two thousand and eighteen book. Are we staying with all of that? Am I and in the and just to clarify also, in the pro forma, the cost estimators costs were actually incorporated and maintained in the pro forma. And that's why the architectural fees and so on stayed as is. The Marshall and Swift in the appendix basically gave the context and the comparison between the the two to show that that there wasn't a significant differential. So going forward, I guess, what am I doing? Am I going to the twenty twenty one Marshman Swift? Am I work continuing to work with the cost estimator whose costs are right on the money, basically? So that's my question.
Can I answer?
Yeah, sure.
I would say stick with twenty eighteen as if this iteration was the original iteration. So I don't want you to be doing a hybrid. Well, now we're going to jump to this because you added for you asked us to do something different. Go back to that original report and use those original numbers.
Okay, that's good. Less work is better for me. Okay, thanks.
Public? Oh, yeah. Oh, did I say we're going to the public? Yeah, let's go. Okay, the case we're currently discussing is twenty seventeen, two sixty two BZ, eighteen Stanwick Street, Brooklyn. The call in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. The web the webinar ID number is nine nine one six six seven zero three two three zero pound. After that, you'll be prompted to put in a participant's ID number. Ignore that request and press pound. You will then be able to press nine to raise your star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your hand by using the Zoom end. The owner raised his hand. You're allowed to speak all the time.
I know, I know, I should have. So I wanted a little bit of clarification on the on the frontage. And I understand that I want to know if we're talking about leaving the first floor as it is and bringing the upper floors out to the lot line in the front so that there is a smooth front line starting from the second floor up this way. Okay. One one other question I would have is because if you remember going back to the original plan where there was two bedrooms and that initial plan was based on the building that I live in. And and the way that they had windows for the for the middle bedrooms, there was like a V shaped cutout in the building, which provided two windows for the front and the back. And I believe that this building was built in the late nineteen nineties. And I think the building code was nineteen sixty eight, and maybe it was allowed back then. And I did not know that those things changed. And for some reason, that V shaped cutout was was left left out of the original plan. And so there was this issue with, you know, either clarifying or modifying it. But when I went back to the architect and we discussed this, he told me that he raised that issue with me. And I asked him to put that V shape back in, and he said, that's not going to work because there's a minimum square footage that this cutout or shaft or courtyard needs to be in order to be considered for light and air. My question is whether we can figure out if the if the square footage of the rear yard, if that would be if we have enough square footage there where according to the building department, it would be enough to provide light and air if that would satisfy. Or or do we want to go more like the chair suggested, we have seventeen feet of of a rear yard and make the adjustments to the plan?
So those those little bitty courtyard things haven't been allowed since, I think, nineteen twenty nine. What you're talking about are tenement buildings. And a very, very long time ago, the concept of those little area, those little shaft ways, really, it was realized that they didn't provide adequate light and air. So the zoning resolution that was adopted kind of a little bit overlapping with the last regulations for tenements prohibited such teeny areaways and allowed only for very large courtyards to provide light and air for the units. So in the case of this little building, you've got the street to provide light and air to your bedroom and living room. And you've got a rear yard to provide light and air to your bedroom and living room. And there are other rules that say that that rear yard needs to be thirty feet. But we have the authority to reduce that when when the site demands a reduction, right, like this site? So so but there's a this kind of reasonableness versus unreasonableness in in terms of this. You know, you don't want it to be so small that it's total misery for a person to live there, which is why I'm pushing for a deeper rear yard. We normally don't allow rear yards at all that are less than thirty that less than twenty feet for a residential building. So this would be very unusual to allow it to be less than twenty feet. But I but given that you you have these two units per floor, the viability of the project as Ms. Cohen and Commissioner Ali Brown have been looking at seems to depend on these two units, perhaps. So that's why I'm trying to kind of compromise this a little bit. But I don't want it to go certainly less than seventeen feet. And those little V courtyards are actually kind of a misery because you can't get in them to to repair them.
They are. I can attest to that.
Yeah.
I can attest to that.
So. So I I wonder if if let's 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 say that we go and revise the plans to provide for seventeen foot rear yard. I'm thinking there's two ways that it could be done. It could be done as either keep the building square and do an average of seventeen feet or do the the rear diagonal, the same we're going to do in the front, starting with this first floor and have seventeen across the entire yard.
It should be. Yeah, I would say you're this is the comment I had before that you're disadvantaging the floor plate by following by following the diagonal. Because you're not giving yourself enough floor plate, right? But you do need half seventeen feet. So and the rear, perhaps you follow the it's an angle at the back, right?
It's a little bit of an angle.
No, it's straight at the back. No, it's straight at the back. So you're pulling back.
The lot is not straight in the back.
There's a slight angle in the back.
It's a tiny, it's negligible. The main angle is at the front, right? The main angle is at the front. So if we just.
Only one foot.
Okay, so I would say you make it straight across the back and seventeen feet is your dimension across. Okay?
Seventeen seventeen on one side and eighteen on the other or seventeen and.
Seventeen average or seventeen minimum?
Seventeen minimum. There you go, Todd.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's that. That is as clear as it goes.
Okay, that's what we're hoping to achieve. Thank you. Okay. All right. So we did have a caller, but I don't know if the caller is still there. What happened to the caller? Stanwick Stanwick Street, twenty seventeen, two sixty two BZ, eighteen Stanwick Street. It's the only case we're discussing at this moment. I think maybe that person put their hand down when they realized we were still talking about this case. Okay. All right. Okay, so we already did this announcement that that was open for the public to speak. So maybe that person had to leave. I don't know. Okay. Right then. So how much time, Mr. Dale, to?
I mean, I'd say we can be flexible to board's calendars. I think, you know, this is sort of a chain of event submission where we need to revise the plans before, you know. Yeah, we can do the seeker or any necessary feasibility change. So I would think we could get the plans done in like three to four weeks, but we need time after that. And then and we have to do the secret submission. So.
I see Jella and Carlos hands up. Maybe they have. I don't know. Go ahead, Jella.
I have a note from Tracy that she left behind regarding this application that once a revised E A S is submitted that the application will need hazardous materials, noise, L P C and air quality review. So just take that into consideration of the time.
So what I would say is is we could, I believe, within, again, depending on the board's calendar, I believe we could get the plans done and any financial analysis changes, let's say, approximately four weeks. How's that? And then with that submitted, with the understanding seeker could be pending that point, that would at least allow perhaps the board to close the calendar or close the hearing waiting for the seeker. I don't know how.
No, we can't. We can't close without a neg deck. But but what I wanted to say is whatever changes you're making are very minimal.
Right.
They're not going to affect the seeker review, right? So whether you have seventeen feet or whatever, it's not going to affect traffic, hazmat, air quality, like all that sort of stuff. You should just get this in. And then eventually the E A S gets updated with the actual set of plans.
I think that Tracy's note indicates that there were some comments issued on secret that needs to be to the applicant that needs to be incorporated into the E A S. So I think you should probably have that. Right?
Yeah, no, I yes, we do. We do have those. And then, as you said, like, a lot of these are just minor square footage changes on the floor. So. Let's how about we say four to five weeks, depending on what the board says, we'll get that submitted. And then with the understanding, you know, it may take the additional time to review, but we can get this in.
Okay, Carlo, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to make a suggestion even to Mr. Dale. You know, we could you know, when we're working on the the future schedule on this, obviously, we reach out and maybe by that point, Mr. Dale's had a an opportunity just to coordinate and we could look at exactly what's outstanding with regards to secret and just come to a, you know, an agreement as to a date that would be amenable.
Right, except that the seeker and the project change aren't necessarily riding in tandem. You have air quality, which is really unrelated to whether you have a seventeen foot.
I just want to say, I don't think that there was any review. Well, I I just want to say, I don't think that there was any review interagency review done. I see no evidence.
Yes.
Of any interagency, like it needs to be done, like hazardous materials, noise, LPC. I believe this needs to be. Barred.
Right, so that's my problem. So it's it's um so Carlo, I would have to say. The seeker should be responded to immediately. With the set of drawings that you've got or as whatever. Because I don't think any of them will affect the bigger questions of LPC, like what's LPC looking at? Whether you cast a shaft on a nearby church, there's no nearby church, right? So things like that, or whether there's archaeological features unrelated to whether you have a seventeen foot rear yard or not. You're gonna be building a cellar, right? So um you know, all of those kinds of things that need to be looked at fast. Or let's say get them going because in addition to which DEP is overwhelmed and with lots of other things going on. And so um the the review turnaround time is is reduced.
Yes, and and that's that's why I suggested what I suggested, because I wasn't a hundred percent sure of the status of the reviews and thank you, Jella, but. Yes, there there are delays right now that it's a little bit harder to uh to gauge timelines. So obviously, the quicker Mr. Dale can make submission, we'll start the coordination. But um you know, I I'll defer to the discussion that goes on in a few days when we're uh. Considering the schedule.
We're comfortable with that suggested timeframe with the understanding that we will accelerate seeker submissions. Even more quickly than that as much as we can.
Yeah, okay. Now, I'm just making five to six weeks to submit the architectural solutions. That's what. That's what the, let's say, the variance application is about, right? And then seeker has to just keep going because it's not gonna be done in time.
Understood.
So, okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to the next, um let's see, hold on a second, yeah, all right, let's go on to the next one.
Item number twenty eight, twenty nineteen sixty six BZ, fifteen Terrace View Avenue, Manhattan.
Did we already have a lunch break? No, we didn't.
No, we had a ten minute break.
No, 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 so we should have a lunch break. It's one thirty, I'm sorry. Um let's have, let's come back at two and have a lunch break. I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Sorry, Mr. Goldstein.
Sorry. All right, back at two PM. Thanks, everybody. Apologies.
If everyone could come back, please.
Can you put my video back on? Hosted says, I don't know who's doing it.
I didn't do anything.
Yeah, finally, my screen came back. I had to re.
I asked you to start video. I don't know. It's not up to me.
I got it. Thank you. The screen keeps falling out on the bottom. Damn.
Okay, we have.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, back on the calendar. Item number 28, 2019, 66BZ, 15 Terrace View Avenue, Manhattan.
Hi, Mr. Goldstein. His hand is, oh, I thought we let him in. Okay. Charles, is Charles Deal the applicant?
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't see what happened to Jay. We keep allowing him to talk and then he doesn't get in. There we go.
We see your hand, Jay. Can you press panelist?
Just let me in.
No, no, I kept pressing allow to talk and then it would jump back. So.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, it kicked me out of being a panelist, so now I'm back. Charles Deal is the architect on the project.
Good, so we're letting him in. Okay, good. Anybody else?
I think that's all we need for today.
Okay.
Okay, raise your right hand, Mr. Deal on mute. On mute, Mr. Deal. Thank you. Hi. You affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions.
I do.
I do.
Proceed.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicants. We heard your questions at the review session this morning. I'll take two and then I'll throw them over to the architect who's here with me today, Charles Deal. With regard to FDNY, FDNY sent an email after review with an LNO. Board has seen that, but they, after the here, the last hearing, they told us to make the changes. That's what we did. So they issued the LNO for the design as it is today.
Okay.
And then I will correct the traffic analysis to have the narrative meet the charts.
Okay, good.
And then the rest, I believe, dimensional setbacks at the fifth floor, that's for Mr. Deal. And he'll discuss the elevator bulkheads and the deductions in quality housing as well.
Okay, good.
Good afternoon to the board. Thank you for your comments this morning. We, of course, will provide the setback dimensions you requested. That's not a problem. We do that in very short order. Regarding the elevator overrun at the roof level, you are correct. I, we can knock approximately five feet off the height of the elevator shaft by specifying machine room less elevator rather than a standard everhead traction elevator in this application. We can show that at the same time that we provide the dimensions for the setback, if that will be acceptable.
Okay.
Regarding the floor area deductions, the floor area, floor areas were provided on the BSA 01 drawing broken out per floor with deductions per floor and a total floor area deduction tabulating all of the floor areas. Additionally, we provided floor plan drawings on BSA 17, 18, and 19, and 20, which.
Okay, slow down. I can't, I can't get there yet. Slow down a second. Let me do this.
No problem. I can also share my screen if that helps.
I'm sure you can do that.
Okay, if somebody were to.
Yeah, what I wanted, I'm still looking for the proposed condition plan, one, the one six submission, right? The, what I wanted was the floor areas added up for each floor. Then I see the number on the bottom. Then I see that on a chart elsewhere with that same numbers on a chart for the whole building. Know what I mean? Because otherwise, I, as far as I could tell, when I went to whichever that floor area calculation chart was, I had to do the addition myself.
Are you looking at BSA 01?
I'm trying, but you know, it takes a long time for it to build. No, no, actually, I'm looking at, hold on one second. I'm looking at. Thank you for the renderings, by the way. Very helpful. Yeah, so if you go to BSA, let's just use a number, anyone, BSA 19, where you've got the second, third, and fourth floor deductions. And you've got all those little boxes. I was wanting to, a chart on this floor showing all the deductions added up so I could see that you have whatever it is, you know, three times an area, whatever it is, nine feet, six feet, eight feet like that.
Understood.
Okay, so that way I could see what portion of the deductions are represented, for example, by a corridor with no window.
Understood. That we can, that we can provide. Again, I don't believe that will take us very long, so we can provide that. Regarding the corridor floor area deductions, what I would direct, what I would do is direct you to zoning resolution 28-31, which allows for a 50% deduction of the floor area of the corridor on the basis of density per vertical circulation core. In the R6 zone, as long as you have less than 11 dwelling units per vertical circulation core, you're permitted to deduct 50% of the floor area of the corridor on that basis. That's where our floor area pain from not from daylight in corridor.
Ah, okay. Tell me again, 28 what?
28-31.
Density per corridor. If the number in a minute does not exceed the number set forth in the following 50% of. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Okay, I believe that was all I had at that point. We addressed the setback mentions, the tabulation, the floor areas. We're going to provide those. We're going to provide a machine roomless elevator shaft, noting that we can reduce the elevator shaft weight by five feet in doing so, and provided the support for the density on the corridor floor area deduction.
Actually, the only other thing I wanted is for you to go through the quality housing requirements and make sure that you check that you're giving this a laundry rule, whatever the things are.
Sure thing.
Doing that.
I would just note that we did design this building to comply with quality housing, but we will provide the analysis based on Article 2, Chapter 8 that you're requesting.
Okay, so it's basically the amenities that are required in order to qualify, right?
Right.
So then that goes to my question about the deduction for what you call it. No, I'm sorry. I'm mixing it up with another case. Never mind, which we never talked about in the other case. Never mind. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
So I believe those were all the questions that were raised this morning by the board.
Yes. Just one second. And the density on the units, it's 11 units, right, is your maximum? Is that correct?
It's 11 units per vertical circulation.
Yeah, okay, and you have.
It's five or six per floor, I think.
Okay, okay. All right. Let's see if there was anything else. Did we have any other?
Ella has a hand up.
Joe, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Hi, I just wanted to mention something regarding Seeker. I have a note that Tracy left behind that once this project is accepted, it seems like it has been accepted. That, so the, we have all sign-offs for Seeker. It was comprehensive review, hazmat, noise, air quality, WRP, LPC. This, these sign-offs are based on a larger project. It's, this project has been reduced in scope by the board over the course of hearings, so. We need a final EAS that's updated for the project, for the current project before the board. And if the board agrees, she left it to the board, then a memo explaining how the project scope was reduced and attached to the final EAS.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, that's fine with me.
We can hand that in. We can, we can put that together for you. No problem.
And I don't know, I didn't check the plan to see if it has this, but also a note on the plan stating that an E designation on the site. I can take a look, but if you don't have that.
We don't have it. Well, I'll work with you for the language of it. No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess the question is then, if we have sign-offs on everything and what we, and we have an agreement about what's going to be added, which is not substantive, like doesn't go to the findings, whether a neg deck is essentially something that can be viewed as issued because we're just, we're just basically telling the story about what happened with this application. Does that sound right?
It's, I think, based on past practice, as long as you have all the sign-offs, your seeker is closed, that final EAS has often been submitted after the close.
After close, okay. All right, good, thank you. All right, any, anything else from commissioners, applicants? Otherwise, I'm going to go to the public. There is someone with her hand up already. Just a reminder, this is 15 Terrace View Avenue that we're talking about right now. So if your hand is up, it should only be for that, okay? And so let's announce to the, to the listeners on YouTube or the watchers on YouTube.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is 2019, 66BZ, 15 Terrace View Avenue in Manhattan. The call in number is 646-558-8656. The webinar ID number is 991-6670-3230 pound. You will then be prompted to add a participant ID number, which you should ignore, and press pound. Then you will press nine star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your hand.
Your Zoom hand, yes. So I see two names in the Zoom room. We just let in Laura Spalter, who's been very patient, I think, here since this morning. So please proceed, Ms. Spalter.
We'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. I would like to note that the community board, Bronx Community Board 8, adopted on January 13th, 2022, at the publicly noticed regular meeting of the land use committee, that they resolved to reaffirm and re-adopt its opposition to the proposed application and urges rejection and denial thereof by the Board of Standards and Appeals of the City of New York. We base this affirmation on the issues that we have raised, that Terrace View Avenue is a narrow, one-way street, providing the basic entranceway to this Marble Hill community. It, it, to have access blocked for construction, equipment, vehicles, will cause months and months of total upsetment to that community and access. The, the owners have said that they can develop a construction plan using the U-Haul site at the bottom of the hill to minimize the traffic issues. However, I, we don't believe that that is a binding arrangement or anything exists at this juncture. We feel that the building is, will alter the essential character of the neighborhood and change the character of the neighborhood. And that is my comment. Thank you.
So Ms. Spalter, are you with the community board?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I'm Chair of Bronx Community Board 8. I'm so sorry.
Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, well, it might actually be helpful, though, I, because I don't like the community board to think that we don't listen to their comments. We've been listening for pretty many hearings.
Yes.
Learn from the community board, and the size of the project went down considerably. Very considerably. Originally, there was no parking at all proposed. We insisted that there be parking proposed. So now there are 16 parking spaces. We also looked very carefully at, there was a point where the community board recommended this should become a parking garage. So we had the applicant go through some very elaborate analysis of making this a parking lot garage, and it became evident that it would not function as a parking garage because of its location. The size of the building is now four stories with a setback floor, like a penthouse floor. So it's not taller than the neighboring buildings, buildings that are in the immediate area. And, and in terms of construction, unlike any application of this size that really we've ever had, we had the, the applicant pursue an environmental quality review of the construction impacts. And, which did show that the impact on the neighborhood would be quite minimal, and there wasn't any representation that they would succeed in using the U-Haul site because they don't have a deal. But as I mentioned earlier today during the review session, it's any construction imposes inconvenience for the neighborhood during the time of construction. But that's what it's like anywhere you live where there's construction. It's not an unusual amount of construction for a building like this. It's actually quite a modest building. So I'm kind of confused about what it is the community board wants to see here. Would it prefer to see nothing? I mean, that's what I'm, if, if, for instance, a parking garage, which is as a right were built, it would be the same amount of construction.
I understand, and we do recognize that there has been considerable changes in the project. This was the vote of the land use committee, and they did not alter. Many people came to that hearing and spoke, people from the community, people all around noting how this would impact the schools and impact access to major, to Marble Hill. And so it, it's, this was our statement, and I'm, I'm here for the record to, to make it. The reason it was a land use vote is because they met in January, January 13th, and the full board doesn't meet until February 8th. So we wanted to also give you that reason, and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. There's another hand up, and I see Commissioner Sheta's hand up, but let's hear from Ms. Suzanne Purkoye. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name. Go ahead, unmute yourself, though, actually. We just let you in. You need to unmute yourself, Ms. Purkoye.
Star six.
No, no, she's, she's just a.
I'm sorry, she's in the room. I'm sorry.
In the room. There's a, there is a button all the way over on the left side of your screen. That's the mute, unmute. It has a little microphone. It says mute, unmute. There you go.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm here. I have my mask on because I'm in a public place.
Okay.
Think, are you on the case for 13424, 159 Street?
No, this is Terrace View, Terrace View, whatever it is.
Terrace View Avenue.
Okay, because we were on the old day yesterday, and now we're on the old morning, and you know, we know you, you spoke about it early on, but you have not take any questions or, you know.
Sorry, so which application are you interested in? What is that?
The last one.
The last one. We haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, that was the last one?
Yes, it'll be the, it'll be the last one we hear. There's one more, I believe, one more after this one, and then we'll get to your case, okay? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I'm sending you back into the waiting room, okay? Thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Sheta, you had a comment?
No, I had, I had a question actually for the community board member who showed up a little bit ago.
She's still here.
I, oh, she's still here, okay. I wanted to like elaborate a little bit on what kind of, what aspect she believes that this building impact the character of the neighborhood.
Well, it's mainly one and two, one and two family homes right there. When you walk down the street, it's a very, very narrow street. And that's the way the community felt, the Marble Hill community and board members who live in Marble Hill. We do recognize that the density has gone down quite a bit, and we do appreciate the work that has been done.
Okay, the density of the project has gone down.
Yes, the density of the project. Yes, we do, we do recognize that. I think it's the whole construction and the traffic nightmare that we heard most about. And the committee, the land use committee decided to reaffirm its original objections. But of course, we note the changes that have been made.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. You know what I wanted to suggest to Mr. Deal, to the owner? Mr. Deal, are you hired for construction observation on this project?
Yeah, we habitually do perform routine construction observation. We do not typically and are not retained for full construction administration of this project.
Okay. Okay, so, so I guess this is really would be Mr. Goldstein's relationship with the client from a lawyer's perspective. And so I would recommend, and I hope the client is listening, I would recommend that you make regular outreach to both the community board and if there's a community association, to the community association during the construction process, so that you don't get lots and lots of DOV inspections that stop the work. And I always call this, it's time to have regular meetings with the immediate neighbors, wherever it is, at the construction trailer or something, or at the local school, that's the best, actually, right there at the school, to just talk about their concerns and how you could alleviate their concerns, because it doesn't need to be adversarial at all. It can be something where immediately respond, and then everyone's happy. Okay, so.
My, my client's watching, and I, I will put the message to him as well. Thank you very much.
That would be very much appreciated.
Okay, and actually, you know what, Ms. Spalter, you now, Mr. Goldstein, you should share, if you haven't already done so, your contact information with Ms. Spalter, and then the contact information for the owner and the project manager for the construction. I don't know if the job's already been let, you know, like, I don't know what the story is with that, but anyway, that should all be shared, so the community board has direct access to someone about complaints, okay?
I'll put them in touch with the owners rep, and Ms. Walter, I believe you have my contact information, correct?
Yes, yes, I do. Excellent, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for your appearances, very much appreciated, and for your patience. I know you were there since the morning. Okay, therefore, since we have closed EAS and the changes are, are minimal changes, which, knowing this applicant, I expect, I know I will see, as opposed to other applicants. I would like to close this application. So motion.
Chair Perlmutter? Hi. Vice Chair Chanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Shabeta?
And I didn't talk about how much time for turnaround. That's just procedural stuff. It's not.
EAS on my end, probably a week. Charles, you have to make the changes on the plans. How long do you anticipate?
We can keep with your one week schedule.
Okay, so I'm going to write two weeks, so it's reasonable.
Motivated.
Okay. Okay.
That would put us on the, potentially the February 28th.
Potentially, assuming, assuming that there's room there for, I don't know how many cases there are on the 28th, so I can't promise the 28th, but something like that, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, am I calling the, the Trup Avenue or just? Through, okay, you already did that this morning.
Trup was adjourned, yeah.
Right, yeah, but I just know it was called again. Okay, new cases, item number 30, 2021.
Oh, actually, wait a minute. Yeah, so yeah, you should call Trup and say it's adjourned. I'm sorry, I was thinking about something else. Go ahead.
Okay, so item number 29, 2019, 294BZ, 241, 243 Trup Avenue, Brooklyn, has been adjourned. Okay, new cases, item number 30, 2021, 52BZ, 13424, 159 Street, Queens.
This is a new case, and that, this is the case that one of the members of the public dialed in about, and then Kurt Boyer dialed in about, so we're talking about your case now. So this is the, first, the applicant will discuss the case with us, and then we'll go to the public, okay? So who's the applicant on this?
Ron Rosati.
Ah, there we go. Yeah, obviously, right, okay. And again, Ms. Kurt Boyer, I see your hand up. You'll be admitted in when the public is invited to talk, okay? Go ahead, Tony.
That's it, Ron?
Frank Mortarella, the architect, should also be in the waiting room.
Yeah, okay, he's in.
Could you unmute Mr. Mortarella?
I did. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, okay, great.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, Mr. Rosati.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Ron Rosati, representing the applicant. I'll address the comments heard earlier at the review session regarding front yard planting requirements. That calculation is actually on Sheet A100 on the bottom left. 100 square feet is required, and we're providing 177.4 square feet. So Madam Chair, I don't know if you need anything in addition to that.
No, I, I probably didn't see it. Maybe when I was looking at the drawing, I blew it up and I didn't see, what'd you say, the bottom left?
Yes, yes, A100, the bottom left, front yard planting calculations.
Okay, I'll get there. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, regarding the 2007 Department of Buildings plans, we can submit those into the record. That was for a 10-foot wide detached home submitted by the prior owner. Obviously, never went forward as a 10-foot wide home, you know, cannot be developed and have it, and.
Any idea why that was submitted at all, a 10-foot wide home to be the little home in all of New York?
Yeah, it's, it's the only, it's, it's the only as a right, I guess, development, so they did submit those, those plans, but it never moved forward. And Mr. Mortarella can discuss why those permits are still on hold.
Okay.
How are you doing? So the, you want me to, I'm sorry, Ron, you want me to discuss the status of the permits or why they're on hold? I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, the prior, the prior development at the site, it never went forward. There were some permits that were on hold. I know you said it was because possibly the developer backed out.
Yes, yes, so, so I apologize. So, yeah, so of course, we don't know exactly what happened or why the development didn't go forward, but in terms of why the project is on hold and why a stop work order was issued, I have logged into the Building Department website and clicked on the stop work order, and it, it indicates, and I'm going to read it verbatim, Borough Commission has issued an intent to revoke approval and permit to stop work immediately due to the fact that the contractor has withdrawn. So this is somewhat of a very common procedure. A contractor, after having obtained the work permit, can request to be removed from the project. Of course, again, we don't know why, but once the contractor requests withdrawal from the project, the Building Department will oblige his request, but instantly apply a stop work order until such time as a new contractor steps up and assumes responsibility.
Okay, yes, this is, okay, got it. I, I just actually thought that it had been applied for under the pre-2005 zoning, and then they realized they weren't allowed to build a semi, a zero lot line building, so it never occurred to me someone would file plans for a 10-foot wide house. Okay, you don't need to submit the drawings. I know that's difficult to get. It was really that. It was like, had something been approved that was a viable building, and if so, why wasn't that pursued? That, that was my question. Can we just go back to the front yard planting? I found the calculations on the first page. But then when I go to the drawing, the site plan, there, there's certain exclusions from planting, and one of them certainly is the parking pad, right? And I'm not, and I don't know whether the pathway that goes through the planting is allowed to be included. I don't think so. So I'm not under, I'm not sure you, if I get how you get 200 and whatever square feet of planting.
Okay, sure, I, I'll elaborate on it. So the ZR 23451 is, of course, the section of the zoning that dictates the requirements for the front yard planting. It, it stipulates that a minimum planting area of 25% is required. And again, just to define, the front yard planting area is not always or necessarily limited to the required front yard setback. So in, in this particular instance, for example, the front yard setback that's required per zoning or the minimum front yard setback that's required. or the minimum front yard setback that's required for zoning would be fifteen feet. But in this particular instance, our front yard planting area is not limited to that fifteen feet. It is required to be the entire area from the front property line to the building wall. So the entire twenty-foot area between the front property line and the front building wall is the required area where the twenty-five percent planting is required. But what the zoning does not say is, or require, or mandate, is that the planting area extend for that entire area, whether it be, let's call it in the east to west direction or the north to south direction. It just says, that's the area. You need to provide the front yard the required twenty-five percent planting somewhere in that area. So as long as we can achieve the, in this instance, twenty-five percent, we can allocate it almost any place we want. And, and I think, obviously, that's taking the zoning resolution was wise. And, you know, already took into consideration that one hundred percent of residential, or just about one hundred percent of residential developments are gonna require a driveway. So of course, a driveway has to be able to cross through that area. So, so again, as long as we achieve twenty-five percent, anywhere within that front, that defined front yard area, it's okay. And again, in this instance, the parking pad is one hundred percent within compliance.
But Madam Chair, just to reiterate on that, this four hundred square feet of front yard, of that four hundred square feet of front yard, two hundred twenty-two point six is the parking pad and the walkway. The rest, one hundred seventy-seven point four is planted, which exceeds the one hundred square foot requirement.
Ah, okay, so it's a hundred square foot requirement, okay. Because your drawing doesn't dimension it, or usually we're used to seeing a little diagram. So maybe I would like to see that, a little diagram that shows the areas of planting.
We could add that.
And you probably remember that from Commissioner Montenat always required that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll gladly add that to the, to the, to the site plan. Sprinklers, the building will be sprinkled on sheet A one hundred. We actually cite that again on the top left of sheet A one hundred under property data. So I did notify the fire department rep. You'll see on the property data, the last line says fire sprinkler system, yes. We could add additional notes, if you'd like, to, to every sheet. But the bill, the building will be sprinkled, so we'll add some additional sprinkler notes.
Good, okay.
And then the cellar, regarding cellar, we'll add a note to the cellar space that it won't be used for any sleeping space. So we'll add that note to the cellar space. And then lastly, regarding the adjacent homeowner, it does seem that they've maintained the property at some point in the past without the permission of the subject site owner. That adjacent property owner does not own the site, nor do they have any legal rights to it. In fact, the deeds that were submitted show that that adjacent property owner purchased it in March of twenty twenty. And on their deed, it's clear that, that they only own their site, which is lots fifteen and seventeen, not this subject site, which is lot nineteen.
Now, so just curious, because I know the subject site was purchased recently. Just curious, have you had a conver, like, the fact that the neighbor, you know, you can see the barbecue is on this site. There's like, the garden continues. Was it really just, they're like, well, there's no fence preventing us from doing it, and we might as well beautify what, whether it's ours or not ours, who knows, but we might as well put a lawn here, is that?
It would seem so. If, if you look, and I can submit this into the record, at the older Google Street View photos, you can see that they did that once in the past, and in two thousand seven, when the fence went up for this proposed ten-foot building that never got constructed, the construction fence went up so that that adjacent homeowner no longer had access. And when that fence went down, it seems as though this adjacent homeowner then again decided to mow that lawn.
More than that, they planted a lovely garden and like, right, there's a garden along the front that's continuous. I mean, I'd probably do the same in their place if there's no fence. Why would you just arbitrarily, like, stop your garden at dirt, right? If no one's around to, to anything. Right, okay, a little bit like a community garden phenomenon. Okay, like, yeah, if you could add, though, that, that little bit of story about a construction fence going up and then coming down, and then they resume their, that sort of. And the reason that I think that's a good thing to have is for the applications where someone claims not to have any, let's say, someone claims independent ownership. And then, let's say, they argue that, look, we never had anything to do with the adjacent site. Meanwhile, it's actively being used by the other site. And they'll refer to this case and say, that was exactly what happened in this case. But in this case, it's really more like squatters, right? Sort of, and without the squatters getting rights, because you come in and you say, oh, no, I'm, I'm actually building my house here, so. No more, okay. All right, I'm just making a note, so sprinklers, no sleeping in the cellar. Adding that little diagram for the planting and.
The older photos.
And the what?
The older photos of the, of the site showing the fence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, great, all right, so let's, any other comments, questions, commissioners? Okay, so I see three hands up. And we're going to make an announcement about how to come into the site to give public testimony, so go ahead. There's five people with their hands up now, wow.
Okay, so the item that we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-one fifty-two BZ, one thirty-four twenty-four hundred fifty-nine Street, Queens. The call-in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. The webinar ID number is nine nine one six six seven zero three two three zero pound. After you press pound, you receive a prompt that says, enter participant ID. Ignore that request and press pound. Once you're in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute. If you are in the Zoom room already, press your Zoom hand. Raise your Zoom hands.
Raise your Zoom, okay, so, and we'll, and, because there seems to be a lot of interest in this, we'll announce this again. So the first person we'll allow to speak, spoke a little bit before, Suzanne Perret Boyer. I apologize for the mispronunciation. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name is Suzanne Perret Boyer. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was listening to what they're saying, and it's way, way from, it, it's contrary.
Okay.
Owner of that property is my goddaughter. She lives in that area two blocks from the property she purchased since she was twelve years old. I live a block from that property. Right now, I live in that same area for forty years out of my fifty-six. What the gentleman just said, it's way, way not true, absolutely. That property, that property is twenty by a hundred, that's what he said. I'm married to an, an architect myself, so his number is what he was saying, is way off. I am inviting all you guys on this panel to take a walk, a drive over to that property. And I send a letter to Donovan Richards, and I send a letter to Adrian Adams. So that property that they want to build will never build. I have over five hundred signatures why that property should not build there. They don't have, they're supposed to be six to ten feet away from the other property. They do not have that if their, that measurement is twenty feet. My husband is an architect.
So maybe I should explain what this is. So we ha, the site is indeed twenty by a hundred, because we have a survey that indicates it's twenty by a hundred, right, and it's also on the text map, twenty by a hundred.
Yes.
Under the zoning regulations, they would need to have a side yard of, what is it, five and five feet?
On. Feet, to be correct, six feet, six feet.
But the minimum side yard width is?
Six feet, I'm married to an architect, six feet.
I, I know, but we actually look at the zoning resolution, so lots of people are married.
That's not the R three one.
So, so I'm looking at the, let's, let's go to the zoning resolution rather than that, okay? So that's what gives us our instructions, and just quickly, if anyone can get there faster than me.
Yeah, per zoning resolution, section twenty-three dash four sixty-one in an R three one zoning district, two side yards are required totaling thirteen foot width, each has to be a minimum of five foot.
Okay, so, wait, 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 let's.
They don't, they don't, I feed.
Ms. Perk Boyer, let's finish this, because there's another section that allowed for the further reduction in a required side yard. It's, which says, for existing narrow zoning lots, okay? Somebody needs to, as background noise, for existing narrow zoning lots, how's this work? Lot, lot, no, no, there is a reduction, no, I can't find it, special provision.
Twenty-three dash forty-eight, special provision for existing narrow zoning lot. It allows, do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yes, please.
Okay, in, in all the districts as indicated, except R two X, R three A, R three X, R four one, R four A, R four B, R five A, R five B, or R five D districts, the required total width of side yards for a single-family detached or a two-family detached resident may be reduced by four inches for every foot by which the width of a zoning lot is less than the required under the provision of section twenty-three dash thirty-two, which is minimum lot area, lot width of residence. If such a zoning lot has less than the prescribed minimum lot width and was owned separately individually from all other adjoining tracts of land, both on December fifteenth nineteen sixty-one and on the date of the application for a building permit.
Right, so if we, that, I'm sorry.
The required width of a side yard shall be less than five feet.
Right, so, so now, let, let me just finish that, so when we do the math on this very narrow lot, we have a reduction of four inches for every one foot less than the minimum width. And the minimum width of the lot is forty feet. This is an existing twenty-foot wide lot. So it means you take, you have allowed to reduce the total side yard to six point six feet, but you're not allowed to have less than ten feet. So what, what the variance request is for one side to be less than the required five feet. So they're asking for, what is it, a four-foot reduction in one side yard. The other side yard complies with the regulations at five feet. So apologies to your spouse, but you need to read the entire zoning resolution in order to know exactly what to do. So they're not asking for a big waiver. We have, the proposal is five feet on one side and one feet foot on the other side.
Okay, Ms. Perlmutter.
Yes, go ahead.
The, 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 none of the documents that on there said one thirty-four twenty-four. So what did they purchase? Because we cannot find any acquired purchase. All the documents on records, at buildings and accurate records, show that their deed said one thirty-four dash twenty-eight. Where is one four dash twenty-eight? There is no one four dash twenty-eight. My goddaughter's address is one thirty-four twenty, the next house beside her is one thirty-four thirty. So, and their, their paperwork, their deeds, that's public records, showing on their deed is their address is one thirty-four twenty-eight, but all their paperwork to you guys and on this, this, this paper trail is showing one thirty-four dash twenty-four, so which is it? What did they purchase?
Okay, so Department of Buildings says one thirty-four dash twenty-four fifteen, hundred fifty-nine Street, block. Where's the block number? Block? Seven, lot nineteen.
That's right, and their address for that block and, and, and lot is one thirty-four dash twenty-eight. There is no paperwork they presented to you guys that have that address on there.
No, no, so the Buildings Department says one thirty-four twenty-four. And the application title here is one thirty-four dash twenty-four.
Their, their deed, their deed with Buildings Department and records showing one, I have all those documents. One thirty-four dash twenty-eight, that's what their deed is saying. There is no records with their deed in Accra and Department of Finance that said one thirty-four twenty-four. Absolutely not true, I have all the documents.
Okay, so all we go to the block and lot number, one two two nine seven, lot nineteen in Queens. Hold on a second.
Hello, I just, I'm looking at the deed on Accra's and block one two two nine seven, lot nineteen, which is owned by Mr. Rosati, corresponds to one thirty-four dash twenty-eight, one fifty-nine Street.
That's correct.
Okay, so, but the, it's the, it's the lot number that counts, right? So if there's a mistake in the, in the address, and.
Yeah, but they're, 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 I, I can see they're, they're attorneys, so why, the, the mistake would have never made. Attorneys are very attentive, so they have one doc, one set of all their documents showing dash, one thirty-four twenty-eight. And then the presented to the, to Board twelve is showing a totally different address. So what property did they own? We are not sure of the ownership of the property.
Twenty-eight, they own tax lot nineteen, so there must have been an error in the typing of the address.
On every document?
So here's my question to you, Ms. Perret Boyer. What, what is it that you're concerned about? I, I'm a little confused.
Yes, it's a fire, it's a fire hazard, there is no way, if that house built and, God forbid, something happen, both houses on both sides are blazed in an instant. I would like you, I invited the bar president to come down there, I invited Adrian Adams to come. I am very active in that neighborhood. I lived in that neighborhood for forty years out of my fifty-six. And I'm one block, I'm on one thirty-four and one fifty-eight.
So, okay.
I build that house from, Roxanne Lennon, she grew up on one fifty-six and one thirty-second.
Okay.
Since she was twelve years old, that is our neighborhood. I have over five hundred signatures why that property should not be built, and I'm gonna lobby for it not to be built. It's not gonna build in this neighborhood. She paid almost half a million dollars for that property, and then.
Which property, sorry.
Her property, her property.
Who's her property? Who's her?
Roxanne Lennon and.
What about, which property is that?
One thirty-four dash twenty. It's on her property that the gentleman was talking about with the garden and everything. The lady, the owner, the prior owner that she purchased from, lived in that house for over fifty years before she sold the house and moved down south. So everything, one second, please, everything that was, that is there was already there from the previous owner, except for the fence that she put out. The previous owner were taking care of that lot, that property, right through the fifty years she lived there. I lived, I lived a block away forty years out of my fifty-six years.
Can I ask, the, the way to solve this for your goddaughter would be for her to look at the meets and bounds on her deed and match the meets and bounds with the tax map? To get an idea of exactly what's to your daughter, your goddaughter.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. I am, I'm very active in that neighborhood, and if I said that property is not gonna build, it's not gonna build. Community board is on board, the, the fire department is on board and object to that property put there.
Okay, I understand.
So, Tom, you're putting right there. There is no way, that, that place is gonna be right at her bedroom window.
Okay, Ms. Perk Boyer, I'm going, Boyer, I'm sorry.
That's Boyer, that's okay.
Boyer, okay.
I, I'm sorry to anything.
It's, it sounds, it sounds so French, so I pronounce it kind of like.
Yeah, it's French.
So I'm going to have to move on to other testimony. I really appreciate yours. But I do wanna say that what it sounds like you have is a civil dispute, and we, that's not our department. We are looking at.
Department, the community board is against it being built, and the fire department, why is the, the, the appeal board is for it, because Ms. Perlmutter.
I'm going, I'm going to explain.
Yeah, one second, in certain areas. Yeah, one second, in certain area, they would have not even. Either, that conversation of that property put right between those two homes.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna have to move on to the next person, you're far in excess of your three minutes to speak, so I'm going. Thank you very much for your testimony and in the process, I'll explain a little more about our process, okay? So, okay, thank you very much, um, I just wanna clarify that. Um, the, what the Board of Standards and Appeals does is it looks at a piece of property. That is rightfully owned by a property owner and the way that we determine that is simply by. Um, a deed and a survey and we don't get involved in property disputes when there is one. We stay out of it and we tell everyone, you have to go work this out yourselves because it's not really our domain at all, we're not a court. Right, so civil suits, property dis, ownership disputes are, go to a court. Or lawyers, uh, work it out together, right? What we look at is someone owns a piece of property. And for some reason that has to do with the size of the property, like this one where it's very narrow property. There's something about the regulations that prevent the property from being developed at all. And so Mr. Rizati explained to us that there had been an application in two thousand seven or something. Where, um, someone applied to build a ten-foot wide building there. And then never pursued it understandably because a ten-foot wide house would leave about eight and a half feet. If you're lucky on the interior and with a, with a staircase and some, and a bathroom, there more or less be no room to have a house. So, when, when a house, when a lot is so narrow that it makes it impossible to comply with the zoning regulations. That's when what the board is for, the board is there to grant relief. From zoning regulations that might otherwise result in what's known as a taking of private property, we, the, the zoning regulations. Cannot allow a private property owner to not be able to use their property. And like only have a park bench or a shed on it. Uh, the other things that are being discussed really are neighborhood, let's say. Uh, civil disputes about, is it mine or is it yours? That's again something for lawyers and courts to work out. So I'd like to go then to Ruth Settles, who has her hand up, I'm gonna allow her to talk. Um, unmute yourself, please, there you go.
Good.
There you go.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, I'm Ruth Settles. Um, Vice President of the United Neighborhood Civic Association of Jamaica and I'm here on, on, um. To represent our president, Mrs. Joyce Denny. Um, we have a couple of, I guess the first statement is, the community and the civic association opposes this, um. This request for a variance, um. I think a twenty-foot, um, twenty by a hundred lot is extremely small. Um, this, obviously the lot has been vacant for, you know, I think someone mentioned Sanborn. Um, surveys or, um, reports, which clearly is close to a hundred years, if not over a hundred years and. Uh, we believe the reason why is because the lot is so small. Um, we've had other developers that have come into the community and have attempted to build. But, um, zoning regulations or whatever, and, and I'm a layperson, so pardon me if I'm not making. Um, saying things correctly or, um, the verbiage is a little off, but, um, if. As Mrs. Perth Boyer mentioned, if they are approved, if this variance is approved and they're, they literally can build one foot up to the property line. It is, it does become a fire hazard, you, um, I believe there's what, an eight or nine foot, um. Footage between that property line and the actual homeowner who lives next door. Um, that homeowner bought that property, um, as the gentleman mentioned, just two years ago. The property was, the lot ma, next door was being maintained by the previous owner and it appears that the previous owner. Had been maintaining it for quite some time, I think, um, I, it was mentioned in two thousand seven that a developer came in. Fence was put up, that particular, uh, development fell apart. Fence came down and that, and the previous owner, homeowner began to maintain the space again, um. I'm, I, I, I just, I mean, from what I understand, when you look at R three one zoning. Um, zoning typically requires a forty by a hundred lot, it appears that. Um, there are concessions made and, um, with that, you know, the lots can be smaller. But it just becomes a hazard for the neighbors and the people in the community. Did they make provision for parking with their plans? I'm sorry, I don't have that information. Or, or what, is there provision for parking because?
There's a, one, there's a parking pad in the front of the house.
There is a parking pad in the front of the house, so basically, they, they're requesting to put a. At the end of the day, we oppose, we have, uh, go ahead, what are you saying?
So, yeah, so I, I'm actually asking Commissioner Ollie Brown, sharing her screen, if she, you could also, Commissioner. Um, show the site plan, um, that shows the distance between the houses, okay? So, so the, so the, she's gonna show it in a second and you'll see. The distance between, if this house is built as proposed. Um, it's seven foot, seven inches away from the. I think that's a kind of a low addition on the adjoining house. Um, uh, the one that's on one thirty-four dash twenty and on the other side, that's one four, thirty-four dash thirty. Um, the, the distance between the two houses is ten foot, four inches, so, um. That's, you know, they're not right up against each other, if there was a one, thank you very much, Commissioner. Um, if there were a one-foot distance between these houses. I'm not really sure what the solution would be, but we, I'd have concern about fire spread. Here, um, the distance is, um, in fact, the zoning resolution has some requirements that. Not in this district, that eight feet be provided between houses, um, and this is almost, uh, eight feet. So, um, it doesn't apply in this district, but, you know, it's basically almost complying with other. Regulations about distance between existing buildings in residence districts. So I just wanna be clear, the, the objection, one objection appears to be. It's so, gonna be so close to my house, it'll be fire spread and, um. You can see it's not going to be so close, it's going to be.
I think seven feet or eight feet is still relatively close when you purchase a home just two years ago, under the assumption that. You had thirty feet or thirty-five feet or four, almost forty feet.
But so, so let, so let's just talk about that for a second, this is like. One of those arguments that's as old as property ownership, so it goes back to, you know. Whatever there were before, when, when, before there were kings. Or let's say after kings owned everything and individuals started owning things. People started to think that if it's not occupied, it must be mine. But it isn't yours unless you buy it, right? So, when the people next door purchased their property, they knew that it was lots, uh. Fifteen and seventeen, which Commissioner Ollie Brown, maybe you can show again that tax map, that's very helpful. They knew that the side, hold, let me just finish, that the size of their lot was. Lot fifteen and seventeen, the meets and bounds are actually shown on their deed. And they know that they don't own that little adjacent property and if they were so interested. In, so fifteen and seventeen, you can see where it is now, it's displayed on the screen. It's a sixty-foot wide combined lot and they knew that they didn't own the adjacent property. Um, so, and if they were relying on that open space, they should have purchased it. This is very common where people are sorry that they didn't go ahead and buy an easement. Buy the lot and then all of a sudden the lot gets developed, oh well.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, I still, I believe that, um, so basically they're asking. For a variance, uh, I, 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 I think that at the end of the day, the community opposes it. And, um, as Mrs., um, Pearl, um, Perth Boyer mentioned, I think the fire department. Um, is, opposes it and.
No, no, fire department only wants it to be sprinklered, so now it's going, it's going to be sprinklered.
Oh, I thought Mrs. Perth Boy, and Boy, uh, Perth and Boy, Perth Boyer mentioned that the fire department did oppose it.
It's not correct, that what they were opposing was that it's not sprinklered and now it's clearly sprinklered, it was. Proposed to be sprinklered, but we clarified that, I just also wanna take advantage of this really very nicely prepared. Uh, tax map that's on the screen, lot twenty-two is the identical site as the subject site. Lot twenty-two, you can see sort of the, the dark, darkened area, that's either a semi. Detached building, in other words, attached to its neighbor, or a zero lot line building. Built either completely full to the lot line or almost, uh, that's, let, that's actually. Um, more aggressive relative to the neighbors than what's pro, proposed here, I don't wanna say aggressive because it was allowed when it was built.
I was gonna say, do we know when lot twenty-two was built?
Well, so, uh, until two thousand five, you were allowed to build what were known as zero lot line buildings. That meant you could put your building right on the property line, so if this building. The subject slot nineteen had been developed in two thousand four. Um, they could have built right on one of the property lines and I think the other side would have needed to have a five-foot side yard, I think that was the rule. Um, so, this is proposed to be built off the property line by a foot. Plus a five-foot side yard, so it's actually less than what would have been permitted as of right in two thousand four for argument's sake.
So it's, you're saying it's less than what it would have been permitted prior to the zone changing?
So in other words, it, it, it is, has more space around it than would have been permitted in two thousand four.
So could that possibly be why the zoning regulations were changed?
Perhaps, but the problem is, this is the thing about zoning regulations changing, if you look, most of these sites. Um, in this tax map are forty feet wide, so the zoning regulations were changed to, um. Let's say, to entitle development on forty-foot wide lots. But what often happens is the zoning changes without taking into account existing conditions that can't comply. With, um, the new zoning regulations and that's what the Board of Standards and Appeals is for in part. Is to, to, uh, provide relief to a lot. That is disadvantaged to the point of being not developable, um, by those changes in the zoning. So, trying to explain, I mean, I see that there's a lot of opposition, we know the community board voted against it, but I want. Everyone to understand what it is we do here and why we're not allowed to deprive a property owner of their rights. To develop their property, if it weren't their property, that's again, a civil suit. Um, to, to dispute that way, but if it's, if it's a legitimate ownership, um, but. Yes.
I'm sorry, but, so what the Board of Standards also has the ability to make concessions and is, is, is that what they're asking for right now? They're asking for a concession of, uh, one, a one-foot, um, yardage or I don't know what it's.
Yes, so, so the concession is, uh, the normal requirement would have been a five-foot yard on both sides. And they're asking for a one-foot yard on one side and five-foot on the other and that's the only concession they're asking for. Everything else complies.
And so if the community opposes it, the Board of, uh, the Board of Standards can still say, well, we, we're going to approve the concession, is that pretty much how that works?
But we, we listen on giving, um, on proving that we really do listen to the concerns of the community. And to the extent that the community may not understand what the issues are, we try to explain them and to the extent maybe listen to a prior application. That was just be, just before this one, where the original application was for a very large building. And in response to community concerns, the building was reduced significantly in size and so by the board.
Okay. We just want to go on record at this point that we, that the civic association does, um, object to the building.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So much.
Thank you very much for your participation, I appreciate it, I'm, we're gonna go next to Dwayne Ricketts, who has his hand up. There's a few Dwayne Ricket calls, so I, I actually don't know which one is the right one to say, okay, Timmy. You have feedback, so turn off your YouTube video.
Hello?
Rickets, yes, go ahead.
Actually, hi, this is Vishal Hardwar, I don't know how that got.
Michelle Hardware?
Vishal, V I S H A L, last name H A R D L W A R. And I'm the Chairperson for the Land Use Committee for Community Board Twelve. And I do wanna thank you, uh, for giving me this opportunity to speak, uh, we did have a hearing back in October and the. The applicant did provide us with the similar information that he is providing to you at this point, um, the. The building that they're talking about is going to be a fourteen-feet-wide building and as you said earlier. A ten-foot home, a ten-feet-wide home is almost impossible to live in. I don't see how a fourteen-foot home would make it that much better for those who would live there and more importantly. The aesthetic of the neighborhood is going to be destroyed, I've visited this area, these are beautiful homes on this block. And to have now a, a twenty-foot building or a fourteen-foot building go right in the middle of this home, of these two homes. Is, is, is terrible for this neighborhood, moreover. The, the lifestyle that is currently in that neighborhood, the children are playing in that area. They, uh, there is questions about who owned it, we can, we can also, the homeowners can also argue. Adverse possession, there's many things, but I, I don't wanna speak about that because as you said, those are for the courts, I just wanna speak about. Uh, from the community board's point of view, um, what, what we would like. We do, we definitely think it's gonna be a, a burden on the community. And the, the home, the applicant failed to show how this would beautify the area and that's what we at the community board are looking for. Um, as you, you said earlier, that, that the Boards and Standards of Appeals are here to, to help. Uh, uh, an applicant or, or a landowner best use their property, but we have to take a step back.
No, 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 I need to interrupt you, it's not best use their property. Please, sir, zoning regulations are, cannot be something that deprives a property owner of their ability to. Use their property at all. That's what's about, not the best use because lots of people wanna build. A hotel on the site in our district and the answer to that would be no, okay, so, but, okay.
Yes, you're absolutely right and, and I just wanna say, these zoning rules were in place before the applicant bought the property. And was aware of these rules, the zoning rules were put in place for a multitude of reasons and we have to. Rely on the, on those zoning rules to protect ourselves in this neighborhood, we, the, the applicant was fully aware. That by buying this property, he or she knew that they would have to get a variance. It, and that should be taken into consideration that. That there was a willful knowledge going in, it's not like the applicant bought this property in two thousand before the laws changed. And then, you know, we could say, okay, there was a little bit of, on, like, um, there, there was an underst, there could be an understanding of why he's. He or she is asking for this variance, but the, the applicant knew. Fully well that they would have to get a variance and yes, on one side, there will be a ten-feet gap because of the driveways. But on the other side, it's just four feet and I do strongly encourage the Board of Standards and Appeals to, to please listen to the community. As, um, as we have unanimously voted to reject this variance and I do thank you for your time and opportunity to speak.
Okay, so again, I, I, you know, we do sometimes have and, um, Vice Chair Shonda sometimes appears at. Community boards that, um, uh, so to give them a little bit of, uh, let's say, information about how the. Board of Standards and Appeals operates and what it considers, I'm thinking perhaps this might be a great opportunity. Uh, for her to do that in the, the case, this case, um, I just want to read one of the. Findings that's made for a variance, um, that has to do with self-created hardship, which is, um. Um, this, what, Mr., sorry, Ardwar, is that correct? Um, was referring to, um. The, it says, that the practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship claimed as a ground for a variance. Have not been created by the owner or by a predecessor entitled, however. Where all other findings are made, the purchase of a zoning lot subject to the restrictions sought to be varied. Shall not itself constitute a self-created hardship, that's very important. Purchasing a site that it has a hardship is not a self-created hardship. The reason we ask, is the site owned in common with another piece of property, is to see whether the property was intention. is to see whether the property was intentionally subdivided to create the hardship. But because we see that the chain of title is very long here, where the, the sites were separate ownership for, for decades, actually, we go back to nineteen sixty-one when we look at that. The hardship has not been self-created. It's very important that you understand that. And then the other thing is, um, I, I also need to kind of just generally ask the community. So what you would have this owner do is nothing on the site. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
No, no, uh, Chairperson, um, we suggested to the, of the, the applicant to reach out to the homeowners on the adjacent properties and sell the property. Because right now, the, the land is being used for a trampoline for the, one of the neighbor's children. That there's a garden in the back, um, and as you can see from the pictures, there's, um, there's trees, there's plants planted all around the area and, and the, and the, the lot in question. So we've proposed that this land, this applicant who bought the property for one thousand dollars, speak to the adjacent homeowners. And from what I've understood, the applicant has not done that. So we did give a, a, a viable suggestion.
It's not really a viable suggestion either, is it?
Well, I mean, they could sell it for whatever they want.
The property, whatever that was, two, three years ago or something, it was available two, three years ago. Why didn't the neighbors buy it before this property owner paid market value for the property? I don't even understand this kind of.
Chair, Chairperson, and, and I think, uh, I can, I can help, um, I can help you understand that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
The, the, the previous homeowner did tell them that this was the entire lot. Yes, the, the purchasing homeowners who bought the property two or three years ago should have done the due diligence. But they hired an attorney, they had a real estate agent, and they left it up to those people. Now, that's a separate issue. We're, and that is the reason why we're here. It's not as if these homeowners in two thousand and seven were saying, hey, we're not gonna pay for this land because you know what? We already own it. They never knew that this land was up for sale. And I think that's very, very important that the board needs to understand. They never at one point ever thought that, hey, this is a separate lot. This has a, a different tax code and we need to purchase this property.
Okay. Can I just jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
That the Board of Standards and Appeals is not in a position where they can intervene on these civil issues of what you own, what you thought you owned, what the neighbor owns, what the neighbor thought they owned. That's something that you, that, that really the private citizens have to pursue outside of the BSA hearing process. Because we're really here just trying to ensure that there's not a constitutional taking due to zoning resolution restrictions. That's, that's what we have to do.
Ms. Brown, and I totally agree with you.
Right, so I'm, I'm just saying that, that unfortunately for this homeowner, they may not be able to convince the owner of the property to sell.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's.
They want to develop it, and there isn't anything that the board could do to force this property owner's hand.
And we're not asking for that. And Ms., Ms. Brown, uh, I just want to say that I, I.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
Commissioner Brown, I do apologize, Commissioner Brown. And, and I do, um, I do understand, and I think it's very clear that this person, the applicant, has all right to that title and can do whatever he or she wants. What we're saying is from the community's point of view, that we did give the applicant options on how they can proceed in the best interest of the community. And, and that's all I'm saying. It's in the, but, and, 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 and I'll leave it at that.
And I simply just say, I understand your frustrations, and I do understand the frustrations of the community. But this could be used by the community as a way to educate the rest of the community as to what their own property rights are, what the limitations are, and, and what is going on in their surrounding community of lots. That's I, without being able to say it anymore and put my hand on the scale in favor of the community versus this homeowner, I do understand the frustrations, but perhaps the only thing going forward is that it should be used as an example for further education, civic education of the neighborhood.
Commissioner Brown, you're absolutely right. Commissioner Brown, you're absolutely one hundred percent right. And, and I, I don't, I, I, I echo your exact sentiments, and I will take that back to the board. I, I really do feel that education is necessary, and, and you're one hundred percent correct. And I do thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. There are two other people who called in with the same name, but maybe it's not the same person. Again, Dwayne Ricketts. I'm gonna allow the person with that name to speak, if maybe it's not the same person. Um, go ahead, whoever that is that I just let in.
This is Dwayne Ricketts now.
Ah, it is, in fact, Wayne Ricketts. Okay, there's one other person with your, your name, okay.
Listen, um, thank you guys for getting me out. Um, I just want to say, yes, we, me, my wife and I, my name is Roxanne, and then we did purchase this in March.
Purchase what? Sorry, I'm sorry. Where did you, what did you purchase in March? Where?
We purchased the property, no, thinking that we purchased everything because it was gated. Everything was, it was all gated around already. So we purchased, knowing that, well, thinking that our real estate and our lawyers would just know what's going on, not knowing that, oh, there was another twenty feet, which is not ours. We did not learn that until we, I met, um, Vishal, where he explained that, hey, that's not yours. It was a shock to us. When we call our lawyers and, uh, real estate person, that was when we were actually, oh, wow. And then we called the person we bought it from, and this is our explanation. They came and tried to build a lot, they, uh, uh, O S D before, as you can say, was in two thousand and seven, two thousand seventeen, and it wasn't approved. And what was happening, they, they blocked it off, and then it grew bush and everything. And what happened, she was infested with rats, rats, and a lot of rodents, basically. So she called in the city. The city came once, cleared it up. Then after a while, it grew up again, and she, uh, oh, she said she could not live in her house because it was rats and rodents. So when the city came, she tried to purchase it. She went to Suffolk Boulevard, where there's, um, the tax office, and she purch- she paid all the back tax. And it's a long story going down, and she paid for it, and then she started paying taxes. And I, I was trying to get those tax receipt that she was paying. And at one point, she said, they add the tax into her mortgage. So she was saying, she got letters stating that, okay, uh, this is what she told me today. She got letters stating the property is no hers, be fact that she's been living here so long, and she's taken care of the property. So at that point, she did not say to us, oh, that property is not ours. Because she thought it was no tax, it's in her mortgage, it was tied in. So she did not mention that to us. Not knowing when she told us the O S, I think by, it was in two thousand when this tax stopped paying, after doing the research, then, no. After it stopped stopping, I think the, the property went up for action, but not, we not knowing this. When the property went up for action, because if I had known that the property was up for action for a thousand dollars, I spent more than a thousand dollars just taking care of it a month. I wouldn't not buy what I just did not know.
Okay.
I'm not a real estate person. I'm not looking to see if the property is my, I did, I honestly did not know. It hurt, it hurt my heart to know that, no.
Mm-hmm. So.
You're gonna put a fourteen-foot O S beside my bedroom.
So.
Right, it's gonna be four feet away from my window.
No, it's not going to be four feet from your windows. It's going to be eight feet away from, and I'm trying to get a photograph. It's going to be eight feet away from the small section of the house that I, I thought was a garage, no?
No, that's my bedroom you're looking at right there. So that's.
It's gonna be eight feet away from the closest building.
If that is eight feet away from my bedroom, that leaves them with eight from twenty, gives you almost twelve feet? Eight from twenty, because I can go right here now, measure that, eight feet from my bedroom, and see how much we get out of that twenty. I'm right, I'm home. I could go measure it. Eight feet from my bedroom is gonna give them twelve feet left on that property.
What?
You're not getting it.
No, 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 you're, you're not understanding. It's eight feet from the wall of your building to the wall of their building. That's the distance. And if, and, and by the way, and I really, I'm, I am trying to have people see if they can understand what's really happening here. But the applicant also did a broad study of the neighborhood yard conditions. And we saw that a distance of five feet, for example, which is what we're talking about with respect to your side, a distance of five feet is pretty typical of this neighborhood, right? Um, that, uh, what's, this is the, right, so the house next door, what's that distance? The house next door is?
It's eight feet.
The house next door is only three feet away from the property, your own house. You know, this is where you have to be careful. Your house is only three feet from the, the subject site's property line. Then, um, and then the other house on the other side is nine feet from the subject site's property line. But we also have um a side yard study, or quickly finding it, um, that shows what's pretty common in the neighborhood. Let's see, um, where's the side yard study? Home with, isn't there a side, yeah, Substandard Side Yard Study. You see that one, Dara? So, um, it's walking around the neighborhood and specifically on this block, you see, where there's the site, and there's at least, uh, whatever that is, seven houses on the block itself that have below-normal side yards. So it goes through, so the side yards are between two and three feet. So actually, one and three feet. And if may, I don't know, does it show more than that? Is there, uh, there photographs? So you can click onto the photographs. So you see like this. You can see that brown house, how close it is to the yellow house. That's worse than what is being proposed on one side. This is actually very similar to what's being proposed. I think this brown house is the one I was referring to, that's sitting on a twenty-foot-wide lot. It's essentially the identical condition, and it's just a few houses away from the subject site.
It's just, it's just a few also, we, but.
Right, so, there you go.
That also was built maybe back then, but now I'm open that the board understand that, no, we have kids. We got, everybody need a little bit of privacy, and I'm sure, I'm sure you wouldn't like, in your neighborhood, you see a fourteen, it's, what would you call a fourteen-foot O S? Um, I, you know what? So sorry that you guys wouldn't understand what it feels like to have a fourteen-foot O S built, four feet, who we are, as you say.
Excuse me, my apartment is twelve feet wide, so I know exactly what it's like to live in fourteen feet. Okay, so.
And, and we, we do understand what you're going through, but we're trying to tell you that we have limitations as well.
Right.
You know, and, and it's, it's really, what happened here is unfortunate, but it has to do with previous owners not resolving what their issue was, and then passing that issue unresolved on to you, which was that the previous owner thought that by paying the taxes of the neighbor, they would then all of a sudden have control over that lot, and it would be turned to them, which does happen in some states. There are those, those squatter laws and adverse possession laws, but the laws aren't the same as in New York City. So if you want to have that lot next to you, you do have to go through the formal process of purchasing it, not paying the taxes, but purchasing it.
I do agree. I do agree. But as I said, I, I'm, I wasn't aware, and I didn't know. If I knew it was up for action, trust me, I would have. But I really, I honestly didn't know.
Okay.
But, but, but the point that we know is, this is where we have at this point.
Yeah, I, I think it might be.
We can't hear you, Commissioner, at all.
I, I think it might be wise to consult, uh, with an attorney of, of all your legal options. Um, I think you should share that story with them, and, and perhaps there's, uh, some avenue for you. Unfortunately, as has been said, uh, we, th- this is not our area, where, where, where we are, um, only lim- we're limited to, we're only able to do a certain limited number of things. And, and this, and deciding on, uh, a real property ownership cases is, is not within our realm.
Right. Okay, and I, I really, I, I, I feel, um, the pain of, uh, property owners who are not as aware as they should be about what their, let's say, their own obligations are and their rights are. Um, but, um, and I think we've heard the commentary, um, and from the community board. But, um, and again, as stated, our job is to prevent an illegal, unconstitutional taking of private property caused by zoning regulations. And, uh, in this case, the ask is very minimal, um, and typical of the neighborhood as was shown in those photographs. Um, and so we would not, it would not be creating a condition that is, um, atypical for, as I said, to, for this area and, um, therefore fits with the neighborhood character. Um.
Can I say something?
Um, no, I'm sorry. The way the testimony works is you give testimony once, and then.
Okay.
You're welcome to submit, um, written documentation into the record. And you, uh, you would write your, um, comments and send it to, um, submit at bsa.nyc.gov. And then we, that will go i- and make reference to the site, and that will go to the record, and we will see it.
Okay, okay, we will do our own due diligence too.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, um, I think we've heard lots of public testimony. I do appreciate everyone participating from the public. Um, and I know that a lot of you are on the, you've been waiting since ten AM, so I do appreciate.
Yesterday.
Waited, oh, even yesterday. We actually, we actually have a website that says which day the hearings will be heard. What, Tony?
No, that's what I was just gonna say, that we have, we mailed out the calendar, and there's a calendar available that tells you what date the case is on. And you must understand, in the morning, the initial part of the, um, review is the review of the applications where the commissioners will discuss the issues regarding the application. Not until the public hearing portion is the public allowed to discuss. So when you're looking at YouTube and you see the review session, unfortunately, the public is not allowed to speak. So you can watch it, um, but I know a lot of you were trying to get in, but it, it, the public is not permitted. It gives the, uh, the commissioners an opportunity to discuss in the public view the merits or the, the, the merits of the application and concerns they have, so that the public is aware of the issues.
And the community board receives a copy of our calendar um, approximately the Wednesday before the hearing, the next hearing. So for, uh, for any subsequent hearings, um, you would, uh, call the community board to find out which day it's going to be heard, okay?
And it's also posted on our website also, um, the Wednesday before.
Thank you for that update. We appreciate that.
Okay, um, I don't know that other than those few corrections, there is anything more to discuss here though, right? Um, so, um, what was I gonna say? So I think, and the seeker, is this type-two action, so there's no more open seeker. So I think we can actually close this case. Um, and for the benefit of the public, it means the board will consider any, uh, leave the record open and consider any submissions that might be made subsequent to that. And we ask the applicant to make some corrections to their drawings. Um, and so, uh, once we close the case, the board will vote on it at the next, uh, hearing that's scheduled. So we don't know exactly when that hearing is going to be. Um, that's something we decide in the next few days. But we ma- not, we list that hearing date on our website, um, in about a week. So, uh, and you can also, and the community board has access to that information as well. Okay, so then I would like to make any comments from commissioners before we do this? I'd like to make a motion to close then.
Chair Pro Mutter?
Hi.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown? Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And I forgot to ask Mr. Rosati how much time he needs.
We can make those minor revisions and get them in, uh, to the board by the end of the week.
Okay, I'll, I'm gonna write two weeks to submit. Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Very much appreciate your participation and patience, and everybody else as well.
Thank you. This concludes the public hearing for January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two.